There he is. All right, it's 5:30. The Balcony Heights Crime Control and Prevention District Board of Directors meeting will be called to order. Take notice that a regular called meeting of the Crime Control and Prevention District Board of Directors of the City of Balcony Heights, Texas will be held on the 19th day of May 2025 at 5:30 PM in the Justice Center located at 3300 Hillcrest Drive, Balcony Heights, Texas, to act upon any lawful subject which may become before the said meeting, including, among others, the following business items. Call the quorum, we have a quorum, we have an attorney, everybody's here. Next is citizens to be heard, do we have any citizens to be heard?
No sir, not at this time.
Next is business items. For crime control or for? Hey, we have one.
One moment sir, let me get that for you.
One Masia, come on down. Thank. Number two, board. Oh, okay. Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, business item number one is approval of minutes for April 21st, 2025. You've got minutes in your packet. Any action?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
We have one approval.
A second.
Seconded by, approval by Jimmy Hernandez, seconded by David Sellers. Any discussion? No discussion? Okay, we'll call for a vote. Mr. Sellers?
Yay.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yay.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yay.
Mr. Eversol?
Yeah.
We'll get used to it.
And Mrs. Weaver.
Yay.
It passes. I vote yay, 5-0, yes, or 6-0. All right, number two, board will review and dis- and approve, disapprove applications for program, project funding to develop the proposed 2025 slash 2026 fiscal year district budget and plan. Mr. LaSaya, do you want to come up and speak on that first?
Yeah, well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Juan LaSaya, 223, Ronald Lane. On the call for projects, I didn't get a chance to submit an application, but I do have a couple of comments. Under section 363151, community improvements, I would like for the commission to consider allocating funding for the park, since that is one of the items that does meet the criteria with it. I was reluctant to put a number because of the budget not recognizing, but I would like to see some funding set aside as part of a crime control to allocate those funds to the park. That's the first item. The second item, and under section 363101, it calls for an opportunity to do alternate means of having the board, the board being made up of citizens or committee members. I'd like for the board to consider doing that and just have citizens be part of the crime control district and not just solely the council. Appreciate your time, thank you.
Is, there's, is there, there's no action on this, is there? It's just, Frank, I mean, Frank. Oh, Lloyd, do you have anything on this, or?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Tonight, you are voting on this action item to approve the funding request that I have submitted for the Balcony Heights Crime Control and Prevention District, or as it's known, the Crime Control Fund. Okay, so a little background, the city has 20 funds altogether. Of course, your general fund is the city's largest fund with about $5.6 million in revenue. Your crime control fund is your second largest fund with revenues of just over $1 million. The general fund, of course, is your most important fund, and you can think of that as being the queen bee, and all these other funds service the general fund, protect the queen, so to speak. We do what we have to do to ensure every year that your general fund is balanced, it has to be by law, not so much these other funds. And so that's why sometimes you'll look at the overall budget of the city and say, well, why is it in a deficit? Well, some years it might be a surplus, but these funds, you know, are, can be used for other purposes, and it's primarily because we want to protect the general fund. Council passes the overall budget, the overall budget in September, and that will include all the city's funds, including the one we're talking about tonight. Okay, we will start the overall budget process, the workshops and all of that in July. So why are we talking about crime control in April and May? Well, that's because local government code tells us that we have to start doing this in April and get it passed in July, and then it goes into the city's regular budget, where it will change over the course of the summer. Passed the crime control budget in June, and it's incorporated into the overall budget, council approves it in July, and then over the summer, it's debated and changed, and it's approved as part of the final overall budget of the city. So in essence, the budget we're looking at tonight is a formality of sorts, because we know it's going to change later. I mean, realistically, you could pass a budget tonight, we're not passing a budget tonight, but I could bring you a budget tonight of $1, and you could pass that, and we could change it later, it's just that we have to start doing this in April. Okay, the Crime Control and Prevention District is a fenced fund, it is a special revenue fund of sorts, we can't just use it for any and everything. I can't use it to pave roads, to do economic development, or make park improvements, everything that's done with this fund has to be directly related to crime control and prevention, okay? Very specific fund. Revenue for this district comes from sales taxes. One-third of all the sales taxes that the city collects goes to the crime control district, the other two-thirds goes to the general fund. So about $1, about $1 million will go to the crime control district, and about $2 million will go to the general fund, and that's the primary revenue source, okay? So that's all the background information, I'm going to be real slow and deliberate, because I know we have newbies on the council. Were there any questions about the overall that you need clarification on?
May I be recognized?
Yes.
So, Mr. Messick, can you clarify what it is, what action you're looking for this evening?
Yeah, the business item here says that we will review and then approve or disapprove the application, basically the proposed budget that I'm bringing to you. That's tonight, next month, and I'm going to go over that next with your calendar, okay? But basically, you're approving or rejecting that tonight, and then it comes forward again in June as your budget, and then it gets approved after the public hearing in July, and so we're just taking the steps, that'll be on the calendar.
I actually have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is, when are we starting? I know we discussed it at the beginning of, I think, a couple meetings ago, where we're going to start off with the zero, the zero budget, not do the?
Yes, sir. So, the actual budget calendar for the entire budget hasn't gone out yet, it's kind of confusing to have a crime control calendar and then a regular calendar, that will go out in June, typically the budget workshops, all that's going to start in July, because that's when we know what our property valuations will be. So yeah, so over the course of the summer.
Anybody else?
Okay, I'm going to walk through the, yes, sir, I'm very slowly and deliberately walking through this, as like I said, we have new members, so I'm going to hit the calendar next, and I'm going to hit what I'm proposing real fast, so. Yes, sir, it's on your packet. Yes, sir, it's, it should be in your packet. Do you all have a budget calendar and a line item budget?
Would you like this, would you like to?
Yes.
Okay, so then let me move on to the budget calendar, and just real fast, it explains why we're doing what we're doing. We started this in April with the call for projects, which meant that we, any organization tied to the city or any resident could come forward and say, I want you to use these funds for whatever, I want the police to have a helicopter, or whatever they want, and so they could make their demands known to the board. So we published in the newspaper that we needed their inputs by the 15th of May, and as typical, nobody submitted anything, nobody historically ever has, and so it's on me now on May 19th to bring forth what finance proposes, and that's why we're here tonight, okay? In our next meeting, June 23rd, that will be your public hearing, and then we will vote on what I'm bringing forward tonight, and then it goes to council that evening. In July, council, you guys as council have to have a public hearing on it, and then that budget gets approved also in the council setting. Okay, so that's the short history of your budget calendar there.
So, Mr. Messick.
Yes, sir.
Along the lines of what Mr. LaSaya brought up, the park fund is not in, cannot be done by the crime control, that would be just a regular budget item, right?
It's very specific, it depends on how it's worded, or what you want to do in the park, and so the specifics matter, especially for this one, and so, but, I mean.
363154 and 363101? 1-5.
Yeah, and there's about 75 things in there that it mentions in. I'm sorry. Yeah, so there's about 70 that, I think I stopped counting after, that specifically the things that you can do, but it all ties back to crime prevention and control, and if it does, then yeah, I mean, we can consider it, and the time to do that, of course, will be over the summer. Okay, so the next thing here is your Balcony Heights application for 2025, 26 district funding. It should look like this, if you all have that. And it's requesting two items, basically, item number one, I'm requesting $161,000 for Justice Center operations and maintenance costs, this will pay the utilities and facility maintenance costs for the Justice Center. The second item is 917,774 for personnel costs, and again, both of these are authorized by local government code. That payroll cost is a little high right now, because we're conservatively budgeting things over the course of the summer, we expect that number to come down, but that number is roughly paying the salaries for about 45% of all the police officers on the force. The other 55%, of course, is being paid in the general fund, okay? That equates roughly to about eight positions, yes, sir?
Can you tell me what your normal percentage is, instead of, like, you have 45% right now, what is your normal target percentage?
In the budget that we're operating under for this year, it's 45% also.
Percentage that you're looking for?
Uh, yeah, so basically, we want to fill as much salary in here as we can to relieve the general fund, and so that's typically been eight positions, or percentage-wise, around 45%. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
This amount of money on our crime control commission, and most of it's going to the police officers to fund their positions, with, now we have increases, we had a 45% increase anticipated, let me look at this correctly.
It's not a 45% increase, it, yeah, there's.
It is a, there's step increases, I think, in the mothers, but regardless, how are we meeting the requirement of the actual definition of crime control commission?
The per.
Do we have anything of substance that could substantiate those offers being paid and justify those offers being paid out of the crime control commission?
Yes, the purpose of the.
We're not addressing the actual definition of the crime control commission.
The purpose of the Crime Control and Prevention District is just that, to fund crime control and prevention, a police officer fits that bill perfectly.
And how is that defined?
Because they provide crime prevention services as police officers.
Patrol officers in their duties in the budget, operating budget under the police department. So what we're doing is supplementing so we can have more officers, basically, and they're funded through the crime control commission, which is pretty much. We have a million 21 in revenues, estimated to be now 1,047 and change, and then the proposed for 26 is 1,078,800, and we're spending a tremendous amount of money of 616,978 dollars on just flat-out salaries. And I think that, in accordance to what the citizen just brought up, we need to start delivering some of these funds, particularly maybe other services such as the park and other essential services, that we can transfer over in the definition of crime control. So maybe in the process, we can talk about that.
Absolutely.
Creative ideas of how we can address.
But it must relate to crime prevention and control, that's the only thing.
So we can meet that requirement.
Yeah.
And perhaps we can do that to alleviate some of the.
We can debate that over the summer, for sure.
Right, so we'll work on that as well. Thank you, Mr. Messick.
Yes, sir.
Chairman. So Floyd, I was adding the numbers up, or Mr. Messick, I'm sorry, and so you're saying our total, you know, funding is projected to be 1,078,800, and after we subtract the Justice Center operations and the personnel cost, that leaves a whopping $20,896 for actual crime prevention, and I'm just not, I'm not good with that, I think we need to.
Sir, I think it, all those costs add up to the 1,078,800, so we're basically presenting, what we're presenting is balanced, revenues meet expenses, the crime control and prevention portion, it, the bulk of it goes to personnel costs, yes, sir, and there's no other programs or anything like that in there now, which was what the mayor was referencing, and so if you want to do that, if you want to put other things in there beside that, that's fine, but remember, it's a balloon, you squeeze the money out of crime control, the general fund's got to pay it, or somebody else. General fund is subject to increased, that will arm tax, of course, if you put too much, you'll have to increase your tax rate, and so that's why we try to put as much into crime control to free up our general fund, because a lot of the stuff you're talking about can be done also in the general fund.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to defer approving these numbers until we have, I guess, more time to.
May I interrupt before we do that? Sir, you may certainly do that, but we're under a tight schedule here, if we don't make this step, then you're going to have to start having special meeting after special meeting after special meeting to get this caught up. Again, the budget that we're passing now, in all honesty, it's irrelevant, we're going to debate it and fix it over the summer anyway. My recommendation would be to just take it as it is now, and when the budget process kicks in, we can discuss all that and change it however you want.
We're going to, we're going to have one on July 7th, the public hearing on those matters, correct?
Yes, sir, on this, and we could certainly work together before then, but again, even if we pass it on July 7th, like I said, then it goes into the regular city budget, where you can change it, I mean, your council and the board, so you can change it however you see fit.
What he's saying are, these are just placeholders?
Sure.
Yes, sir. And if we don't hit that mark, though, like I said, we got to start doing special meetings then, to get caught up.
Councilman Hernandez has yielded the floor. So, Mr. Minister, I concur with my colleague, I think that the concerns are very valid, and I think we'll address them in that budget process, but just to let you know, I think this council is very committed, and this board is very committed to special meetings, so fear not, we're going to be having plenty of special meetings to catch up on the lost time of year that we've lost a lot of momentum, so there's going to be plenty of special meetings called, and so just be prepared to work.
Don't worry, that's what we're here for.
We're committed to work.
Yes, sir, and ultimately, guys, it's your budget, whatever you all want.
Go ahead, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can you explain why the medical's increased by $30,000?
Which medical costs in the budget? So we never got to the line item budget, but that's the last handout that. Yeah, well, I'm there now. Okay, so.
So, yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I may be recognized, just real quick.
Okay.
There's a motion on the floor, so either, whatever you're going to do in your ruling on that.
So, it, well, should we get, is there a second to the motion? So it's going to die to lack of?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I think that's what my colleague.
Okay.
Is indicating.
Mr. Sellers, you'll address your question in the next, item three, and you have the four.
I'm done.
You're done?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll just.
Do we have any other motions on number two, to review and approve or disapprove applications for program project funding to develop the proposed 25, 26 fiscal year district budget plan? Mr. Rodriguez makes a motion, I have a second. Approve, approve the applications for project funding to develop the proposed 25, 26 fiscal year district budget plan and plan. Item two. Do we need a vote on that, or?
Need a second.
We have a second, right there, this, Mr. Hernandez's second. Oh.
Am I at this point, or?
That's, that's item number three. That's just the application.
Okay, I second.
Okay, so, we have a second on the floor from Mr. Hernandez.
Hi.
Mr. Rodriguez? Mr. Hernandez?
Hi.
Mr. Eversol?
Hi.
Ms. Weaver? Passes, okay, now, we go to the line item. Number three, board will schedule a public hearing June 23rd on the district's 2025, 26 proposed budget, it's all yours.
Yeah, so, actually, the time to talk about the line item was in number two, what we're asking for here in number three is just permission to advertise it so that we can advertise the public hearing, but, I mean, if you want me to go back to number two and answer any questions, I'm happy.
Just go down the line item, and if I have any question.
So you have the budget? Okay, so what we have here is a comparative line item budget, if you look at the top, you'll see your fund balance is roughly $350,000, that's what we have in reserves, that's roughly 3.8 months of operating expenses and reserves. Now, your general fund, you have to have three months of, in this fund, you don't have to have any, so you have a very healthy fund balance, in other words, which you can consider using if need be. I'm looking at the proposed 26 budget column, the one that's darkened here, this is what we're proposing, as you can see, our revenues equal our expenses, you see the sales taxes coming in, a little bit of interest, and that equals your total revenue amount. Your expenses are broken out, just like we had said on the application, the largest being your expenses, your payroll expenses, 917,775, and your operational expenses, therefore the Justice Center below that, for 161,000, and you can see all the line items there, and so all that totals up to the same as the revenue amount, so in essence, we're passing a balanced budget. In reference to Mr. Sellers' question concerning medical, so we had budgeted 60,000 this year, we're only, I'm estimating that we're only going to spend 40,000 because of turnover, and not everybody in there in the police department actually takes the medical, but next year, I have to assume that they will, and so that's the 69,000, does that make any sense? May I be recognized?
Yes. Run that by me, us again?
Yeah, so line item 18513210, medical, okay? This year, we budgeted to spend 60,000, that was our estimate for medical, however, due to turnover, and due to the fact that some officers don't take the medical, we're estimating that we're going to spend 40,000, but with more turnover coming, and we don't know what the new officers are going to take, we estimate 69,615 for the new year. That's also with a built-in increase, just in case that happens, if it doesn't, that number will be lower.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you foresee a reduction in the police force or relative to the same amount of personnel?
The number of officers have decreased by one since last year, but any other changes, that's y'all's decision.
You're assuming that we're going to need 30,000 more dollars?
Yes, sir, we probably won't use it all, but just to be conservative, right now, that's the estimate, again, later, as we go in the summer, a lot of these costs will come down, because we'll know what the actual medical increase is, if any.
Any other discussion? Okay, anybody call for a motion? We have to, we have to approve for the.
Yes, sir, for number three, you're disapproving, allowing me to go ahead and publish in the newspaper and have the public hearing in June.
Sorry, June 20, or June 23rd?
Yes, sir.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, just for clarification from my colleagues, just so everyone understands, and you're all new to this, basically, this just gets this project, this process started. What will happen is that, you want, anyone wants to have a concern about any line item here, it can be addressed during that process later, and you can either eliminate it, add to it, change it, modify, whatever you want to do, it's just begin the process, but we're not adopting anything right now, other than the process and procedure.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any motion?
We have a motion on the floor, from anyone? I'll move. Yes, I moved it, we go ahead and move, proceed.
Mr. Rodriguez makes a motion, do I have a second? Seconded, seconded by Mr. Eversol, a call for vote, Mr. Sellers?
Hi.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mr. Hernandez?
Hi.
Mr. Eversol?
Hi.
Ms. Weaver?
Hi.
Passes, I vote. All right, do I have a motion to defer adjournment?
I still move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, and seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. We have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Mr. Sellers?
Hi.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Hi.
Mr. Hernandez?
Hi.
Mr. Eversol?
Hi.
Ms. Weaver?
Hi.
We are adjourned.
Okay. Time?
I can't do it like Mr. Gillian does it.
I'm Mr. Burton, Councilman, and Mr. Chairman. Time?
Oh, time is six o'clock.
Of the City of Balconies Heights, Texas will be held on Monday, May 19th, 2025, 6:00 PM. So let me repeat the part that I missed. Notice is hereby given that the above called meeting of the governing body of the City of Balconies Heights, Texas, will be held on Monday, May 19th, 2025, at 6:00 PM in the Justice Center, located at 3300 Hillcrest Drive, Balconies Heights, Texas, 78201, to consider and act upon any lawful subject which may come before said meeting, including, among others, the following items to be discussed and acted upon. We're going to call to order in recording of a quorum. We do have a quorum present. Now we'll do the invocation and pledges of the allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flags. I pledge allegiance, United States, to the flags of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands.
Ready? Lord, we just thank you for your presence in our daily lives. We pray you, pray for our city, we pray for our citizens, Lord. We pray for our business community. We pray that we've somehow, in your presence, worked within us to help one another and lift each other up, help us to look for the good in each other, and help us to find ways to love and care and be kind. We thank you for your presence here, right now. In Jesus' name, amen.
For any disruption, anybody making personal attacks and causes disruption of the meeting or decorum of the meeting, and we'll be called to your attention if you do that. So with that said, we have the public comment period. We'll start with Ms. Robin Fonseca, 8150 West Hausman Road, agenda item backpack giveaway. Ms. Fonseca, go right ahead. You can approach right here to the podium. Oh, okay, so you want to wait a little bit?
Yes.
Okay. We'll come right back to that. We'll wait a few minutes, see if she shows up. She shouldn't take very long. Want to bring somebody else up? Okay, Suzanne DeLeon, please. Info from Madeline Slay. She's out of town, work-related.
Yes.
You're speaking on Miss Madeline Slay's behalf.
Exactly, yes, I am. Thank you, Council. She is working in Laredo today, and she's at another council meeting, so she asked me to do this. It's regarding agenda item number seven. Says, "Good evening, council members." And Suzanne is reading this message from and behalf of Madeline Slay. She's a resident and property owner among Gentleman Road, 202 Concord and 141 Altgelt. "I am here today to express Madeline's concerns regarding the proposal to install covered buses, bus benches in our neighborhood. It is her understanding that these would be provided for the SAISD students that ride the school bus. The placement of these covered benches directly along Gentleman Road poses a serious concern for residents. In addition, such structures will likely attract loitering, graffiti, and trash accumulation. From past experience, areas with similar infrastructure often become hotspots for skateboarding activity and unfortunately encampments by unhoused individuals. These benches will also obstruct visibility from our homes to the street, creating not only safety issues, but also diminishing the aesthetic and open feel of our neighborhood. These factors combined will undoubtedly lead to a decrease in property values, a matter of serious concern for homeowners who have invested heavily in maintaining the viability and safety of their properties. Madeline asks the council to reconsider the placement of these benches and explore alternatives that balance public needs with the rights and concerns of nearby residents. She appreciates your time." And I did sign up for another one. Do you want me to do that now?
No, ma'am. Let's wait to see. I think we have Ms. Marine back.
Okay.
I'll call you back up in just a little bit. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Robin Fonseca, you're next. Come on up.
Yeah, the, to Ms. DeLeon, I don't know that you can speak on, if you're, to the extent you're reading someone else's comments, that would be your time, I guess, if that makes sense. I don't know that the rules allow for someone to speak on someone else's behalf, unfortunately. Yes. But if you have any time remaining and you want to use that, you could. Yeah, I would do, I would do that at this point. Yeah, your name's essentially on the list twice. Yeah, your name's basically on the list twice, but everybody just gets that one turn, so three minutes total per person.
Would you like to time it a little bit?
I'm sorry.
It is, but anybody that signs up gets three minutes. Yes, but, and if she had anything else, if she wanted to say, it would need to be done in that three minutes.
So let's just call it a halftime right now. We'll give her another two minutes. Okay, come on up if you like. No? Two minutes? Go ahead and time it, Ms. Eversol, please.
Question. I wanted to address our city administrator, Andy Jocelyn. You have done such an amazing job in the short time that you've been here, and I understand that you've decided to retire soon, and it's going to be hardship for the city. And I wish that you would be able to stay and not retire. You're too young to retire yet. So I just wanted to let you know how much me and the previous council really enjoyed working with you, and we wish you and your wife well in all of your endeavors. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fonseca, now you can come up.
Good evening, Council. I am Estella Martinez. I do reside at 101 Ronald Lane. We are going to be giving away to the community, to the children for back to school. It's a community giveaway for August 2nd, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Location is at 209 Pleasant Drive. Free backpacks, free supplies, free hygiene items, food, pantry outreach services. We are hoping that everything does work out as planned, as agreed upon, from City of Balconies Heights. I do have on the left of me my sister that is going to go ahead and read something briefly.
Hi, my name is Robin Fonseca. I do not reside in Balconies Heights, but my sister does live here. The proposal that you have in front of you outlines our community initiative to host a back-to-school backpack giveaway at supporting underprivileged students in the Balconies Heights and surrounding areas by providing them essential school supplies and basic necessities. Our goal for this event is to help alleviate financial burdens and ensure each child is ready and set up for success for the upcoming school year. At our event, we are planning to give away 700 backpacks filled with supplies, food pantry to-go bags, so just basic necessities that the kiddos can be set up for, you know, the first few weeks of school, for those families that might find it harder to have those items for their children. We will also have free haircuts, a mobile clothing closet. So if a child does come and they do have that need, those resources are there available to them. We will also be having free food, free drinks, of course, that would all follow guidelines for the Health Department. I have hosted about nine events. We've always hosted on San Antonio property, so this is my first time hosting in Balconies Heights. But of course, whatever the regulations and rules are, I'm prepared to follow, prepared to have permits, insurance, and of course, ensure the safety of every student and their family that will be there as well. At our event, we will also have entertainment for the children to come out. We were kind of talking about having possible bounce houses, face painting, balloon animals, things like that, so that the kids can come out and enjoy a fun day, kind of leave their home life behind that day. We will have, of course, security on standby at the event, a large team of volunteers. In a previous meeting, we've also kind of talked about working with the police department, fire department, to ensure once more the safety, as I think that's my main concern and Estella's main concern as well, because when you typically have a free event, you do get a large crowd. So any way that we can make this as safe as possible, but also ensure that every student has what they need, is kind of the goal here.
Time is up, ma'am. Okay. Are you finished, Ms. Fonseca? Or you need a little bit more time? Okay. So we're not allowed to respond?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I had two items on there. First, I wanted to welcome the new council members, congratulate you on your, your elections. I wanted to encourage you all to be independent and consider all consequences of your decisions coming forward. I want you all to consider all of the related expenses and the return on investment on the proposals that are going to be brought forth to you. Example, in June of 2024, there were proposals to hire three consultants with no understanding of the cost, duration of purpose, or purpose of those. Those were defeated by the previous city council. Secondly, there was an attempt to hire a third-party company at approximately $20,000, when the council was able to do it themselves for a few hundred dollars in searching for our current city administrator, who unfortunately is resigning shortly. I would also encourage you all to consider all factors in relation to any apparent campaign promises, the cost impact or, or lack of impact for all residents. Also remind that, Council, that grants, even if we receive them, are not 100%. But County Heights would still have to pay for 50% to 70% of any projects that are funded by grants. So an electronic sign, it's not going to be 100%. Bus benches would not be 100%. Any other proposals, again, Balconies Heights would have to come up with additional funding for those. Now, for First Amendment rights for citizens, citizens to be heard is for, is for citizens of Balconies Heights to express their First Amendment rights. Some in council seem to think that any mention of their name constitutes a personal attack. Citizens should be allowed to speak their minds unless directly attacking or insulting a council member. Now, repeating what a council member has said or written publicly is not a personal attack. Council members also have, do have the option to respond to citizens' concerns or questions, but they are not required to do so. It says specifically that they are not required to respond. Council members, I believe, should be given the, the floor to respond if they ask to be recognized by the chair. Also, agenda items that are properly requested by current council members. There was an agenda item that was properly requested by a current council member during the April 30th council meeting to extend the time for citizens to be heard to five minutes. That was illegally removed. In December of 2024, the city council approved an update to the Council Code of Ethics to state, and I quote, "No item that has been properly submitted by a council member may be removed from the agenda before the agenda is published without prior written approval by the submitting council member." Now, this, this council member had submitted a request, and I find it, I find it kind of hypocritical, because in June of 2024, there was an agenda item to extend the citizens-to-be-heard time from three minutes to six minutes. Now, that person, that same person that had put that on the agenda in June of 2024, is the one who removed this from the current meeting. So, again, illegally. That was a properly submitted agenda item, and you all should be discussing it tonight. And I thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, everyone. I have, I have the same words for you, sir. You've received great praise at the beginning of your career here. I knew you were going to do a great job. I'm disappointed that you can't see a way to stay longer. I, I think your position is a very highly regarded professional position. I know you're well qualified for the job. If all possible, you can find a way to stay. You could still pull that resignation, that retirement paperwork. But you got my support. Very proud to serve with this community. What I'd like to say is, a statement was made in a recent meeting that it costs $1 a year to maintain or pay for the office at the mall. I have it on good authority. I checked it out with someone on staff. That is not true. The way that contract is written, it's $2,902 a month, which is deferred compensation for that space, which comes out to roughly $35,000 a year. That will be paid as soon as we receive a profit from our partnership at the mall. So that, every year, is $30,000 kicking off on whatever the profit's going to be on the mall. So it is costing something. It's a deferred payment. And you need to know that, because in your positions, you need to know what things cost. Not just take someone's word for it. You need to research, look into paperwork. In my case, pull the contract and see what's in it. It's in there. Thank you very much.
So we have the consent agenda items, approval of minutes for the regular meeting of April 21st, 2025, approval of meeting of the minutes for special meeting on April 30th, 2025, and the finance report for the month of April 2025. Okay, so, does anyone have any input on this particular item?
I like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. So we have a motion. We got discussion after that. Do we have a second to that motion?
A second.
Okay, now we'll call for a discussion.
And the, and the consent agenda is going to be all three of these together. If you want to pull them out, you can pull them out.
Yeah, pull them out individually.
Yeah, but the motion would just be approve consent agenda, and that will be two minutes and a finance report.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Okay, any questions from the council?
I do.
Okay, let's start with Mr. Sellers. Councilman Sellers, you have the floor.
I just want to clarify that on the Balconies Heights crime control prevention, we approved the minutes on April 21st. Is that the same minutes we're approving now on April 21st on regular city council meeting? Or is that...
The, the crime control minutes are separate from the city council, yes, sir.
Right, thank you.
Any questions? Any other council members?
I'll go for it.
Um, burden?
I see on here, we've got Floyd available. Okay. The AED's life packs for, I guess those are recertifications for the defibrillators?
Yes, sir.
No, so there's a for the fire department. We needed to upgrade ours. We were at a life pack 500s, which were issued in, I believe, in 2011 or something like that. And so we have a few models back, and they needed to get new ones for that. They were starting, we're starting to have battery problems, and the batteries starting to become discontinued. And I've actually bought some off market, off brand ones, and they don't last. And they're still pricey, so.
I was just curious. Next one is the newsletter. Are we behind on our our billing on those? Are they just sending us invoices three months at a time, or?
Are you referring to the check register, Mr. Burton?
Yes.
So I can be on the same page with you.
So a page to the.
So if y'all want to pull anything out of the consent agenda, you need to take a vote on that to pull it out, and then vote on the consent agenda, and then whatever gets pulled out, you can vote separately.
I thought we were in discussion.
So the purpose of the consent agenda is not to discuss it. It's just to approve everything that's in it with a simple vote. But if you want to discuss something, if any member wants to discuss something, you can ask for it to be pulled out and discuss that.
Well, we've already, we've got a motion already in a second.
My motion was to approve the minutes, not the budget.
And I'm saying, I believe that needs to be amended to say approve the consent agenda.
Okay, but I thought you just said a few minutes ago, each one can be approved individually.
No, they need to be, so the whole purpose of the consent agenda is to say one motion, you approve everything without any discussion. If you want to discuss one individually or vote on them separately, y'all can do that. It just needs to be a by majority vote to say, hey, let's break these out, or let's discuss these individually.
Well, I like to pull out the budget so we can discuss it.
Okay.
So you, yeah, you would move to discuss the budget item separately. You would get a second and a vote, and then that would be pulled out. But then you could still do a vote on what's left in the consent agenda, which would be the two minutes.
You have all them. You still have the floor.
Oh, so I can, I can still, I think he's calling for a.
Do you have a motion right now to pull the the use of the finance report?
Yes.
Yes, so you can second that. You can, what's all that motion?
I second it.
Okay, go ahead and vote on that.
Now you can go into discussion and.
No, we have to vote on it.
To pull it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor of pulling it so that we can discuss it?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, and Mr. Burton?
Aye.
Mr. Sellers?
Nay.
Nay, so you don't want to discuss it? Okay.
So now you want to, and that's why we do this.
So we got four to one, we can discuss it.
So now you want to resolve the consent agenda. You have just minutes in there. So if somebody wants to make a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda.
I'm sorry, what's funny? Share it with us. Share it with.
Please, no disruptions, Mr. Signs, I mean, Mr. Lassia. We did ask you. Yes, but I'm, I'm the presiding officer, and he just, he just, excuse me, sir, sir, excuse me, Mr. Lassia. You did this while you were on the council. Don't do this while you're in the public. Please maintain decorum in the meeting, please. We need to run this professionally.
So y'all's next step would be you have two items remaining in the consent agenda, which are two minutes. So if somebody wants to make a motion to approve what's left in the consent agenda, which is minutes from 21st to 30th?
I'll make a motion to approve what's left in the consent agenda.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion? Mr. Sellers is second. It's called a vote. Mr. Burton? For the minutes, are you okay with it? Or you still want to talk about it?
Well, I still want to, I want.
Just the minutes.
We're pulling, we're pulling it to you. We're still going to talk about this.
Yes.
But right, but right now, we've got a vote for the minutes to approve the minutes as a stand. Do you have any questions or objections to that?
No.
Okay, then we need your vote. Yay or nay?
I said yay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Forgive me. So yay, Mr. Sellers, yay?
Yay.
Mr. Jimmy and Mr. Emerson, Mrs. Weaver.
Aye.
Yay. Okay.
Okay, back to where we were.
All right.
The three months on the page two.
Mr. Mr. Sellers, City Secretary is asking to clarify, was that a yay from you on the consent agenda for the minutes?
Is it yay or nay, Mr. Sellers?
Yay.
Okay.
Approve the minutes.
Just the minutes, yes, sir.
Okay, and he was.
Now you discuss.
On the financials.
Item C, on the financials, all you like.
So it's four, one on the financials, five oh on the minutes. Okay, all right.
I'm good.
Good. Here we get to go.
Okay. Alamo Mail and Company, the, are we behind on invoicing, or are they behind on invoicing us?
We're not behind anymore. We're sorry. No, since there was turnover down there, what I recall is that the invoices weren't going to the right desk. It was a turnover, and now they are.
Yeah, I'll move down to, you, you got one past me. The the approval for a new PD vehicle. I'll let that one, you got that one passed. I didn't, I didn't see it, I guess, because of all the inter fighting and stuff. So I did not see that. Guardian pressure washing for three grand, almost 3,100. We've got a maintenance crew. Why aren't, why aren't we utilizing our maintenance crew to pressure wash?
Yes, sir. So this was for the entire building, lower and top floors, a crew of, what, eight, I think, came out and did this. And so, yeah, could he do it? Yeah, would it take him six months? For sure. And so these are the professionals. They did it pretty quickly. They knocked that out in one day.
Okay. We've got one for reimbursed supplies for one employee at 842. And then further down, we've got office supplies. This is on page six, I'm sorry. At the very bottom of the page for 540. Are we paying an employee and then reimbursing that employee back for office supplies?
Can you give me a name? What name are you looking at on page six?
Check number six, 6919 is the second one from the top for 84216.
Oh, yes, okay. And so this employee had to go out and purchase IT equipment for some reason, and it was late in the day. So she used her own card and then submitted the receipt. We're verified it was legit and reimbursed her.
This is a new one to me. What what is Stiris Cloud Retention?
Yeah, so that's an IT expense, and all of our stuff that that we have on our service is backed up at a facility that's called the cloud. I don't know exactly where it, I think somewhere in Pennsylvania. And so if we ever get ransomwareed or whatever, we have immediate backup. And so that's a service that we provide or that we pay for every month.
Okay. And then I think this is the last one. And it falls along the line of the, are we late invoicing, or they're late invoicing us? I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11.
Monthly shred.
Team 15 shred.
Yes. Out of the blue, one day, they came forward and said, oh, we just now noticed that you didn't pay these invoices over these past. And so we, it took us some time, but Ms. Merlow and Ms. Byas went into the accounting system and verified that, yes, we did not pay them and that they were legit. And so that that happens sometimes. This year, we might get invoices from two years ago, because people finally realized, oops, we forgot to bill them. And so that was one of the cases here.
That were, that was all I had in the checklist.
Anyone else would like to?
So I want to clarify, you're saying that they did not invoices, or we didn't pay the bill, and they just now figured it out?
You know, for stuff that happened that far back, I don't know if we were invoiced or not. I assume not. I mean, every now and then, yeah, we do miss an invoice. But for the most part, we get it right. And so I would assume that they just didn't send it.
Anyone else?
So do I need to make a motion to approve the check register now?
Well, I do have some questions, counsel.
Oh, sorry.
Um, I do have some that are concerned. There's one for 54,171 for a PD Tahoe. I'm sure you're going to tell us that was budgeted.
It was, yes, sir.
Could you give me an explanation on that, why we need another Tahoe?
It was budgeted. It replaces the older investigator unit that we have. We have a rotation cycle for all of our vehicles. Roughly, we have eight vehicles, and they get replaced two per year. Every now and then, we're going to need to replace the investigator vehicle as well. And so this year, we're not replacing two vehicles. We're just replacing one. And that's the one that came up on the schedule.
Which vehicle did this one replace?
Whatever the older investigative unit was.
Mr. Sevias, what is the vehicle, if you're aware of it?
It's still in use right now, but it's going, it has a lot of maintenance issues.
What year is that one?
I believe it's a 2017.
2017. Do you know the current mileage on it right now?
It's close to 100,000.
Okay. And you have some documented maintenance records that are there that show that we're having a lot of problems.
Yes, sir. But let me also add, when it comes, please keep in mind, all you guys that are new, when it comes to police vehicles, you're not necessarily looking at the mileage. The odometer is very misleading. A lot of these vehicles idle. And so for every hour that a vehicle idles, it's the equivalent of 35 miles on on the odometer. And so we have engine hour meters on these cars. And so based on that, you know, the odometer might say, no, it's only 75,000. But the engine hours tell a different story, they say. It's more like 300,000, or whatever the case may be.
As a former police officer, I'm aware of all that. What I'm concerned with is the actual care of our vehicles that we have. I personally have witnessed the vehicles being abused when there's not even calls. They're running pretty hard. They're braking pretty hard. They're not on any calls. They're just running them hard. So I would cautionary the police department to start taking more care of the property that we buy for you, and to make sure that they last as long as we can, to make sure that they're not being abused by the officers or anything when there's not any calls that are being made, they require emergency response. So just use that, convey that as you're acting as one capacity right now, since our chief is not here. In what capacity are you acting? Just in his place? There's no title or anything? Okay, sir. So then we'll, I'll have staff deal with that later down the road. But that's a concern that we want to make sure we take care of our equipment we provide, because we spend thousands of dollars on that. So the next one that I had here and is going to be judicial services. I just want to make a note. So we spent $3,736.80 for March 31st. It just says services through March 31st. When was the beginning date of the billing for legal services that it started? Is it 4/21 through 4/24, four days? Only?
I'm sorry, what, what page?
Have you noticed under 1717, page four? If you look under 1717, municipal judicial services through March 31st?
Yes, sir. Okay, so these are billed monthly for the both that and for the court underneath it. These are monthly bills.
Okay, so the next, those dates that are next to it, 4/21, 2025 through 4/24, 2025, does that reflect the dates of the billing cycle?
No, sir. If you look up to the column header, that's the date that it was due and the date that it was paid on.
That's correct. Okay, so then what is the actual billing cycle between what date and what date?
It's for the month.
Okay, so between 4/1 through 4, what? For the end of the month? I mean, give me the dates. What are the dates from the billing cycle?
We pay these monthly. They are for the full month. So what we paid there, it was for the month of March, and we paid it in April on that date. And so April's invoice will come in, and we'll pay that in May.
I understand that. What I'm asking you, Mr. Floyd, Messick, is that what are the dates? The beginning date would be, I assume then, 4/1, and then the end date will be another date, the end of the month? Or when is the beginning and the end of the billing cycle?
Yes, I don't know. Say it any other way. It's for the entire month of March.
There were 31.
March 1st to March 31st. And then the one in April.
To ask him, just very simple question, from the 1st to the 31st, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's all you had to say?
I did.
Okay, so we have the general legal services through March 31st, again, to Davidson, Thury, Orem, and Garza, and that's for $3,001, at $3,010. And that's for the same billing cycle, correct?
Yes, sir.
Got it. Okay, so that's what we're spending on our legal services. All right, now, there was a Gerald Kossev transmission service for a PD unit BHO6 for $5,253.40 for an overhaul. What happened with that, Mr. Monsevias, if you can tell us what what occurred in that particular vehicle? Oh, you're not, you don't have the information available?
No, sir, not at this moment.
Do you have anything that was reported to you, Mr. Messick, on that?
No. Yeah, Officer Timmons is their fleet manager, and if he says it needs a transmission, they take it in and get it taken care of. And so in this case, they did.
All right. Was there any other proposals or any kind of estimates from anyone else other than Mr. Kossev? Make sure we're getting the best deal for the money?
Trust me, Bruce will get the best deal.
I'm sorry, what's that?
Trust me, Bruce will get the best deal. And so if that's the price, then, yeah, he got this deal.
So it falls on Bruce's lap?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. And then we have reimbursement travel, TML midyear conference, Mr. Juan Lassia Jr., former councilman for $907.66. Why was that so much? Can you explain why that was so much?
Yeah, so I believe both of you went to this, and your reimbursement was much cheaper because the city.
237, I think.
Right, because the city paid for your, because the city paid for your hotel, and he paid for his own.
That's what I wanted to clarify. If he paid for his hotel, do we also pay for family that comes along on the trip?
No, that's on them.
Okay, all right. We have Mary Spence, Professional Services. We had done away with her services some time ago. Why do we pay her another $500?
Let me find her here real fast. But basically, we were paid, that's the payout for the last month that she served for us.
And what month was that? From March 16 through 31st?
Yes, sir, for March, for those dates, yes, sir. Because her contract wasn't one for it. It was for a certain time period.
And she had a contract?
Yes, sir.
And who had approved that a contract with her?
Mr. Parelis and Mr. Lara.
Really?
Was aware of it, yes, sir.
And the council knew nothing about it? Okay. There was another one in here that I saw, something with Suzanne Deck. Is that in here? Or was that in another minutes that I read? Might have been another minutes in previous, I'm not sure. Does anyone remember seeing that on the minutes? Suzanne Deck, and there was zero for a permit? She wasn't charged, or that person Suzanne, excuse me? Excuse me, I'm just, Mr. Messick, was it you, ma'am? Suzanne? It was you? Okay. And so there was zero, there was a permit for free or something? Okay, but let me, correct me if I'm wrong, the process, you get the permit before you start the work, correct? So why do we have a zero and an issued permit and $0? Okay, Ms. Dillon, I appreciate your input, but right now, Mr. Messick has the floor, ma'am. You've had, I didn't ask it of you. Thank you very much. Okay, appreciate it. Mr. Messick, go right ahead, sir.
I have no idea. I, I'm not over permits, like I said, that would be
Anderson, is she?
Community development.
Well, we have Nick, inviting away here for her. So when he gets up here, what I'd like to do this time, usually just get the reports. If there's any questions, but for the sake of the new council members, each department head will come up to the podium and give you a report.
Okay, so what I want to avoid is that thing that's been going on for some time now, where there's special favors and special privileges given to certain individuals, but others don't get the same treatment. So it has to be fair across the board to everybody. It can't be just for one person, either because they're a former mayor or a former council member or anything. We need to be fair across the board to everybody. And that's all I'm advocating, is the fact that if you're going And that's all I'm advocating, is the fact that if you're gonna pull a permit, go get the money for it, pay the money to the city, then you get your permit, not the other way around.
And if there's instances like that, sir, I'm gonna work, if we jot them down, I will sure look into anything like that.
Great.
Can I clarify that really quick?
Oh.
Over here.
Yes.
Nick, yeah, so I work in community development, I'm the one that's processing Suzanne's permit over here. There has been, from, from what I'm aware, we have been paid. I'm not sure why it's showing up as not paid on the report.
She just said she was gonna pay it, you hadn't paid it.
I, I will need to go back and clarify, but there was no special treatment or anything like that. There's, there's nothing like that for any permits that are pulled within the city. The only permits that are not paid for are nonprofits and they show proof of tax exemption whenever they come through.
So we had another citizen in the community do the same thing just recently, that also was making a lot of noise late at night on Glen Arm. And that person did not pay for his permit. He is a former councilman, didn't pay for his permit, start at work. We had to send somebody out there to make sure that got addressed. So please, and what is your name again?
Nick.
Nick, don't let it happen again, please, make sure you stay on top of it.
Can you clarify which residents on Glen Arm?
Uh, I think it was Mr. Lada's resident.
Okay, so they do have a permit going on.
They do have it now, they didn't have it back then.
They've had the permit for a couple of months here. I don't have the exact date with me, but they do have a permit to do work and will review noise ordinance whenever it comes up here.
Okay, but just make sure in the future, all these permits are paid for before any work starts or anything gets done. So we can't have special favors with people.
Again, we're not trying to do special treatments here again, but it goes back to our code enforcement, which we're kind of limited on resources, so it's, it's only so much that we're able to kind of track here.
Well, Nick, I have to disagree, it's not all on code enforcement. We have staff on community development that needs to stay on top of this. I'm gonna be making sure I look out, it's okay, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, so so let's move on now, is there any other questions from anyone else on the expenses?
I have a question.
Yes.
So going back to the reimbursement for Mr. Lasea of nine oh seven sixty-six, do we not have some kind of guideline for travel expenses so that that's not taken care of? I mean, that's not abuse.
Yeah, Mr. Hernandez, that is covered in our personnel policy. And again, typically, what we try to do is pay the hotel room with our city card. But if that doesn't happen, the member picks it up and we reimburse them, and that's what happened here.
If you can provide an itemized list of his reimbursements to the council, please. Make a copy and provide us, so we can review it. Okay, is that okay? Okay.
Sir, from him, yeah, I was just.
Councilman, would you like that?
Yes, and I don't know if maybe the city administrator could provide us with the guidelines for travel expenses and that would be great for us.
Most definitely, sir. Thank you, any other council members have any other concerns on the expenses? So let's go ahead and move on now, we need a, a total vote on the approval of the consent agenda items, unless anyone else has any comments about the finance report, is that correct?
You need a motion on the finance report only, you've already approved the minutes.
Okay.
So move. Mayor.
Yes.
I have a question. Who's the pest control guy that went to Aljet, who's on Aljet Street?
Old Gelt.
Aljet.
Yeah, is that a concern on the finance, Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
It is, okay.
Yeah, it's at the fire station.
That's the fire station?
Yes sir.
That was the pest control there?
We have rats.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so if there's no further questions, then let's entertain a motion. So I mean, to continue with the vote?
So move.
Because we have a motion already, correct? And we have a second? Okay, so Mr. Hernandez, you have a second to that?
Second.
Okay, Molly, beat you to it, so Ms. Weaver, you second that motion? Now let's call the vote. Mr. Burton?
Aye.
Mr. Sellers?
Aye.
Mr. Hernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Ebersol?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes five oh. Okay, so now we have approved the consent agenda items, is that correct? Sir, can we move forward? All right, now we move on to the business items. One, consideration and action to appoint a mayor pro temp, mayor. So I would like to move that, and suggest to the council that we appoint a tenure council member, which is Mr. Jack Burton, as the mayor pro temp, unless there's any objections from the council.
I make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Hernandez, do we have a second to that motion?
I second it.
We have a second for Mr. Ebersol, call any discussion? Anybody have any discussion? Okay. So, and we call the vote on it, all in favor, Mr. Burton?
Abstain.
Okay, Mr. Sellers? Okay, Mr. Hernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Ebersol?
Aye.
Mrs. Weaver?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the motion carries, passes, four to one, right? Because Mr. Burton abstained. So one abstain and four votes, correct? Okay, so Mr. Burton, you're now the mayor pro temp. Okay, item number two, discussion and possible action regarding appointment of the new members to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the term of twenty twenty-five, June twenty twenty-seven. Let's move forward with that and open it up for discussion.
Have you recognized?
Yes sir, Mr. Burton, go right ahead.
Do we have any, do we have any people that are, are considering beyond P and Z, or, I'm sorry to yeah, P and Z, do you have any?
Mr. Burton, we have three members that are up. Their terms are up in June, this June.
And, Mr. Burton, go ahead.
Oh, at this point, at this time, we haven't had anyone that has applied. If that's your question.
So then legal, do we just ask them if they want to continue or?
So if you, because they're appointed positions, they're gonna continue, whoever's on the P and Z now will continue to serve once their term is up at the end of May. They'll continue to serve until a successor's named. Or until they resign and the resignation's accepted, or they're removed for some other reason, so.
So the motion would be just to?
If you want to reappoint people that are on it now, you could, you could do that, you can, you have three openings, three slots are gonna come open. But if you don't do anything, the three people in them now will continue serving in that role until you name someone new.
Are, without saying names, are they here tonight?
No, you can say names.
It's, you can talk.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's three.
Can you tell us the names, Ms., if I may, councilman, please? You know, mind me interrupting.
Absolutely, so one gentleman, Rudy Flutus is up, his term is up in June of this year. George Monsiff, appointment number three is up, also June of this year. And then we have the, the chair, Charles Winkler, who is up June of this year.
Yes, go right ahead, sir.
Uh, without them being here.
We can defer.
Yeah, ideally, you would see if they want to continue or not.
Right.
Unless y'all have some other name in mind, but that would be, they're not here today, so.
I think we should, I think we should get, you know, ask them and bring it back possibly, table?
Sure. Okay, that's considered. So we have a motion on the floor to table, to go back and revisit.
I have a question.
Yes, go right ahead, Mr. Sellers.
I would like to know if I nominate somebody?
Yes, any of you can nominate someone and they get voted in, these are all three, I think, I believe it's seven members, so you have three and then four, they.
And there's an alternate on the P and Z, which the gentleman is here now.
There you go, you've got three.
Mr. Kyle Grady. Mr. Kyle Grady, would you have any objections to filling in a slot? Being that you're an alternate and that is why you were approved for that? Okay, so he will take precedent over any candidates at this point right now, because he is an alternate. And so he's already signed up, been approved, so we will only have two other.
Well, you'll need, if you move him on, then you'll just need, need another alternate, so.
Yeah, which we can.
But right now, the idea is to table this, y'all can.
Right.
Then the existing P and Z, as it is right now, will just continue on until you do something different.
That's perfect, so we have a second to Jack's motion to table?
I can make a motion.
You had a motion to table already?
You already left one.
Okay.
Second?
I second.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez's second, now any other further discussion? Okay, let's call the vote, Ms. Weaver? Okay, Mr. Ebersol? All right, Mr. Hernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Sellers?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Burton?
Aye.
Okay, so we have one nay, four ayes, the motion carries. We're tabling it for another time. And I think we're probably doing the same thing on the next one. Discussion and possible action regarding appointment of the new members to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals for the term of June twenty twenty-five, June twenty twenty-seven. Okay, open it up for discussion?
Mayor may I be recognized?
Yes sir, Mr. Hernandez, go right ahead, sir.
I am on the Board of Adjustments and I don't know if that's considered appropriate now that I'm on council.
Yeah, once you, once you got elected, you're actually, you gave up your spot, you created a vacancy there on the Board of Adjustments.
Okay, if I may interrupt, that's not entirely correct. Mr. Garza just recently did a ruling way back because we were having a problem with getting members to serve on the Board of Adjustments. So he got a ruling, a state ruling, local government ruling, that said the council members in that event can serve as members of the Board of Adjustments.
As, as an alternate?
Yes, as alternates, and so the former council members pointed themselves to that board as alternates. And so that's the way it sticks now, they no longer are on the city council, so it's a moot point on their point, we have to point all new members to replace their positions. So if we want to do a special meeting to do that, we don't have any pending issues right now on the P and Z on Board of Adjustments, so we're good. So if anyone would want to do the same thing you did with the first one on the P and Z and defer it to a special meeting?
Well, and the alternate, if they, it's two separate bodies, so to the extent you were appointed to it, losing your city council position wouldn't lose your position as an alternate.
Okay, we'll visit that in the special meeting on that.
Okay.
So it pretty much stays where it's at until we can appoint and go through that process. So my recommendation to the council is that, it's at your will, council.
I have a question, how many members are supposed to be on the Board of Adjustments?
We have a total of five.
Five, can you give them the names of those, to lean it as an understanding?
Yes, can I have that? I left it in my office, so if I have a, I can have a moment to go and grab it and come back.
You want to get it later for me?
We can get it later.
We can get it later.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to defer until we have more information.
So you want to post, you want to do what Jack did earlier?
Yes.
Okay.
To table.
Thank you, I appreciate that, sir.
Okay, you're quite welcome. So we have a motion by Councilman Hernandez to table, do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Councilman Burton is second, let's go ahead and call the vote. Mr. Burton?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Sellers? Mr. Hernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Ebersol?
Aye.
Ms. Weaver?
Aye.
Five oh, the motion carries the table. Okay, we're moving along pretty quickly. Now let's move on to the next item on the agenda, item number four. Discussion of noise ordinance, Article eleven point nine five point one six B and nine five point two zero E and G, Mr. Burton? And I can't pronounce your last name, so please forgive me, Ibarque?
Ibarue.
Ibarue.
Yeah, so I just want to hand you all something really quickly, I don't think it was included in your packet, is that right?
I think this was the item that we had on the agenda, where the council had broke corn and we weren't able to discuss this. And there was a citizen, I think, I don't know if she's here. So we have it on the agenda now, ma'am, to address it.
Okay, so I've provided you a full noise ordinance for balcony sites and neighboring municipalities. That would include Castle Hills, Leon Valley, and San Antonio, for your reference as we kind of go over the presentation here. So we are here at the request of Councilmember Burton to discuss the noise ordinance and how it pertains to construction hours and machine use hours here. Next, please. All the information that I provided you will be included on this slideshow here. It is highlighted in the information that I gave you, but it is all here up on the slides. So for balconies heights, our construction for commercial hours is seven AM through eight PM, Monday through Friday, eight AM through seven PM, Saturday and Sunday. This commercial construction is going to include excavation, erection, demolition, alteration, or repair work on any building or structure. Go ahead.
Did you say commercial construction or?
This will be contractors, this will be contractor construction.
Contractor.
Yes, contractor construction, so this would be under ninety-five sixteen B. No worries. There are defenses to noise nuisances. This would fall under item H right there, under ninety-five twenty. Any commercial construction that is taking place would be a defense to a noise nuisance. Item G right there, this is including mechanical equipment such as lawn mowers, sanders, routers, items typically used by residents. This is going to be allowable between the hours of seven AM, eight PM, Monday through Friday, eight AM through seven PM, Saturday and Sunday. And that's how the balcony heights noise ordinance reads currently. Castle Hills are a neighboring municipality here, they have different hours than we do and as you'll see here, most of them do. Their hours are going to be seven AM through eight PM.
Mayor, y'all can turn your mics on, if y'all can turn your mics on, there's no. I just, just the public needs to be able to hear, that's all.
Okay, no problem. I was just explaining to him because he's new.
For Castle Hills, I'll repeat myself, they have commercial construction between the hours of seven AM through eight PM. This is only allowable Monday through Saturday. There is no construction allowed Sunday in Castle Hills. For machine operated items such as saws, drills, sanders, routers, all those items that I previously mentioned here, it will be allowable between seven AM and eight PM every single day of the week. So Sunday is the only non allowable day for commercial construction. Next, please. Leon Valley, they have the hours between seven AM and six PM for commercial construction. This is Monday through Friday only, no weekend work is allowed. Any machine operated items for resident use or upkeep?
Nick, if I may interrupt you just.
Yeah, no worries.
Is there a reason why we're going through all the other San Antonio ordinances when all we need to do is make sure that we enforce our own ordinance?
Uh, yeah, it was brought to our attention that there is concern within our hours, so I wanted to provide reference to other local municipalities.
Right.
And as we go on later, I want to state that we should be, as council members right in, as you, as a mayor, a comparative analysis to make sure that we're falling in line with local municipalities. We are more than welcome to set our own standards here and within our own reason for our noise ordinance, but this is just.
So in the case, in the case of moving just forward quickly so we can get this done, as our ordinance stands, it's fine, right? There's no issues with it, it's not out of compliance, it's not outdated. It is, can be enforced as it stands, correct?
I believe that it is good as it stands.
All the citizen wants to do on this is make sure it's enforced, okay? And we're gonna address that, we'll get you some help. We're on it, we're on the code compliance issue, building a task force. We're gonna have a pretty good, strict code compliance for the apartments and everyone else included, for the city in general. So I think we really don't need to go over all this information. And so, okay. Wrong here. Okay. Okay. Councilman Burton?
I noticed, I noticed missing from the Balcony's Heights page is a decibel. Some of them are seventy-five dB, some of them are eighty dB.
Castle Hills, Leon Valley, San Antonio, they do have a decibel system where they record and it is within proximity and a distance of how it reads and what is considered a noise nuisance. We do not have a decibel system in place here in Balcony Sites or the equipment provided to be able to enforce that.
Well, then how, how do you determine? It's, it's, it's one, it's one person having a complaint and then the other person defending the complaint, how? They take a video of it and? Because I guess you would, if they submitted a video, you'd get the metadata off when that video was. And then my other concern with the, the, this is not construction noise, but it is noise nonetheless. Well, I, I live in a precarious situation because I live in residential, of course, but the offender is in commercial, and they're out there with pressure washing it two in the morning on a Sunday morning, and you've got that lot. Yes. Okay, so explain to me what, what we need to do if you need to file action, what, what needs to be done? They call the dispatch, or do they just contact you the next working day or?
The side of the police department is a little bit separate from us. They are able to investigate noise nuisance, from my understanding, and you can clarify if that's any different. Again, my recommendation would be you submit a code complaint through our website, and you provide proof that we were able to go on the code compliance side and enforce it. The police department would handle it a little bit differently, I don't know if that.
That, that was irrespective of what, this, the spirit of this was, but I'm just asking so that we all are on the same page.
Any other questions? Mr. Sellers, did you hear, Mr. Burton? Excuse me, Mr. Sellers, you?
As a council, are we allowed to change some of these times?
That is, I, I'm not sure if that's a question for me.
It's not an action item tonight, but it's certainly something y'all could do in future meetings, an ordinance, so you can change.
I'm reading, I'm reading something that you highlighted on here, and it says limited heavy machinery, construction equipment repaired thirty minutes before the listed construction hours or after the listed construction hours, but no later than ten PM. Not sure what. Yeah. That was San Antonio.
Mr. Sellers, anything else?
I, I just want to know, can we change the time? Can we vote on time changer?
No.
No? We can't change, we can't change this order.
Not tonight, but it's certainly something if y'all want us to bring it back.
As long as it doesn't violate.
All right, thank you.
I, I do want to highlight a potential impact if we do change the hours in the future. This would create a barrier for contractors and potential new homeowners. The target demographic according to the City Plan 2040 is a younger demographic to come in. Younger demographics typically come in to remodel homes, and that is.
And if I may, just to explain to everybody in the council, it's very simple, it's just respect for your neighbors during these hours, it's already proper times are there, seven AM to eight PM, plenty of time for people to do work. What it is, is you don't want to be, neighbors to be disturbed. And so if you look at the final C under B, the acts enumerated in the following sections of this chapter, among others, are declared to be loud, irrespective of whether the decimals are high or not, they are declared to be loud, disturbing and unnecessary noises in violation of this chapter. But such enumeration shall not be deemed to be exclusive, which means that, yes, they can be changed. But the fact is, is this whole code is just basically irrespective to your neighbors. If somebody's working at nine o'clock, ten o'clock, a person within a reasonable amount of hours wants to sleep, seven o'clock in the morning, it's early, but if they're doing it at six thirty, two in the morning, not acceptable. It's pretty much common sense, and this, this code, basically, ordinance just gives the empower to the city to act if they violate within those hours. So it just gives a protection of layer for the community and the citizens, pretty simple. So I don't see any reason why you want to change the hours, but it's at the purview of any council member to propose that to his, to his fellow colleague. And if you have any questions about it, well, you take it up at the council meeting. Yes, ma'am, it's.
Thank you. Does this just pretend to construction, I mean, what about your neighbor's loud music? Or your neighbor's dog? Well, not, I'm not too bad about the dogs, I don't park it everybody.
As you go through the full noise ordinance, there's other highlighted areas for noisy animals, noisy vehicles, all that is highlighted in the Balcony's Heights noise ordinance that I gave you, which would be considered a noise nuisance, but that was not up for.
So here, here it says nighttime hours, eleven oh one to five fifty-five, nine in the morning. Okay, those are the hours that it's not supposed to be. Whether the music's playing very loudly and you can hear it in your bedroom, none?
To my understanding, there's no usage of nighttime hours, it is a definition, but it's.
So they can just play their music loud no matter what time of day it is? In other words, if somebody makes loud music all the time and, and somebody can't sleep, you're not going to do anything about it?
They can do something about it, councilman. If you look under, just a little bit below, the one that's about the engage in construction on the page that was highlighted.
It's not instruction.
Yeah, ninety-five point one eight amplified sound. If you look at, it covers what you're asking, and it is unlawful for anyone.
Amplified sound, okay, I see that.
Any amplified sound, so it does meet your requirement. Complaint just needs to be filed, the city will follow up.
Okay, we'll see what happens.
Urge that you submit evidence with us as a code complaint comes up, that we, we are.
A camera, video, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Councilman.
With all due respect, we're back square one again because you're telling me that the evidence, which would be a videotape, does not give the decibel levels or can meet the requirements of a violation. I'm not a tenant, I'm a resident.
Yeah, or a resident, it means everything in general. So.
Thank you.
May I be recognized?
Yes, sir, Mr. Hernandez.
So my question is for Councilman Burton, did you have a recommendation for us?
Well, without, you know, knocking the whole system down by making a change, I was gonna, I was gonna say, the, what was it, seven to seven instead of seven to eight? Just make it seven to seven all the way through, but, you know, then you, you've got to also consider daylight. I don't know if we're doing away with daylight savings time or not.
Old municipality considers daylight savings time within that.
Because there's some nights where eight o'clock, it's still bright outside.
Yeah, I understand.
But.
Work hours would not change, though, and typically, most people would go to sleep at the same.
That, that was going to be my recommendation, but without going through a whole process, you know, it seems as if I'm going to throw a wrench in the gears here, so I, I, I don't know what to do.
We can take it on in a special call meeting as well, put it back on the agenda, and we'll do a little workshop on it, if you like.
I just think in the spirit of the ordinance, you know, it's kind of love thy neighbor kind of situation.
Yes, sir.
But if they're not showing the love back, it's kind of hard to prove the, the violation. And then we're back at the beginning again.
It, it goes back to the, the evidence that we receive, and as we start receiving right in the future plan that, that I understand you mayor has.
Yeah, sure.
But this is something any peace officer can enforce, it's a local ordinance, so any peace officer can come write you ticket for this if they catch you doing it.
Mr. Hernandez, you still have the floor?
I'm done, thank you.
Okay, you. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Council, Councilman Sellers?
For the city attorney, I, I understood that we can, we can put this on the, put this on the agenda and discuss it and review the definitions and change definitions at another council meeting.
Yes.
If you choose to.
Add and take away.
And your colleagues agree with you, yes.
Well, I recommend we do that.
Okay, well, we can bring it up in another meeting.
Yeah, at the, at the end of this meeting, there's an opportunity to ask for future agenda items, and if one of you guys tape, put this on as an action item, that would open it up to, y'all, it, it'll take at least two phases because we need to get your feedback on what you want to change, and then we can bring you the final version where you could approve that, so.
Okay, so anybody else, any comments on item number four? Discussion of the noise ordinance, any other comments?
Yes.
Good, well, let's bring you up. Mr. Juan Lassera, number four. Four, I thought he had a, he had the opportunity when he came up, didn't he?
Yeah, so there were two, we had two that had like a list of items.
Right.
I, I actually, because you asked, I went and looked at y'all's ordinance.
Correct.
You get three minutes per item when it comes up.
Let's give him his three minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, do we want to bring Miss Suzanne DeLeon as well? Give her.
It's only on items that are on the agenda.
Got you, okay. So we want to be fair to everybody, Mr. Lassera, go right ahead.
Mayor, can we just give it a second? Need to change the batteries in the microphone.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Just one minute, Mr. Lassera. Can you use what? Oh, it just takes a couple of seconds to get the battery in there, just a little patience. Give everybody chances, they need to go to restroom real quick. Oh, Nick, thank you, sir, for your presentation. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for your research.
Go ahead, the other members will be here. You want to wait on them, or you can go right ahead?
Are we in a recess, or?
No, we're just, we were waiting for the battery. I just told the others they can go to the restroom. Mr. Ebersol wanted to go, he needed to go, so we can go without him.
Well, it'd be up to.
Mr. Lassera, where's he at?
Be up to the speaker if he wants to wait for them to get back.
Okay, well, he went, he took off himself, so. Let me see, we have anybody else?
Yeah, Mr. Seines is here.
Want to come up?
Unless he wants to wait for the other folks.
So you have items four. Okay. Go right ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Lassera.
Yep, hello. Members and council mayor, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. I know we spoke about in detail on the ordinance and the noise ordinance enforcement and lack of enforcement. I'm really thrown back and troubled by certain actions that have happened, continue to happen, code violations, they get called into PD and code enforcement, and nothing happens. Particularly to noise items, noise complaints. How are we going to address that? Does anybody have, have an answer?
Um, Mr.
Yes, sir.
The task force is being formed of a code compliance officers, and not going to be just one, there'll be several. So being that we just started out, yes.
We're, it's a, it's a public comment, so it's.
Oh, no, it was an agenda item.
It's up for discussion at this point.
Exactly.
So, yeah, I guess.
It's a subject of discussion, we're past the citizens to be.
But he's on a three-minute timer, are you using here?
Okay, well, I guess, real, real quickly.
Don't get aggressive on getting this task force together.
Okay, till and when that task force gets informed, I really plead to the council that once it's formed, that whatever rules are going to be applied, get applied laterally to everybody. Earlier, it was mentioned that old and previous council were getting preferential treatment, that is still the case today. In fact, I submitted three police reports on a noise violation to the police department, and nothing became of it. I'm still waiting for police reports. Why are certain people allowed to get away with certain items, in particular, noise complaints? So please, you know, let, let's work together, if we're going to build a city, let's build it together, let's work together, let's quit pointing the fingers and work as a union. I mean, it, it's one, one person that called in this complaint from one understand, my understanding, the noise complaint that I called in, there was five calls from different residents over the same person playing amplified sound throughout the city, and nothing happened. Let's work at getting this resolved. If we're going to do rules, let's do rules for everybody, all the way around.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Lassera, anything else?
That, that's it.
On the subject?
Huh?
Anything else on that subject?
On that particular subject.
Okay.
And, and just for clarification, I think everybody knows who I'm talking about, amplified sound is the old nineteen fifty's truck that goes around town during election time, telling you who to vote for.
Okay.
So, I mean, that, 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 that is illegal, and that should not be happening.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much, very much, Mr. Lassera.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. We appreciate your comment. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Burton, if you'd like to respond to him.
Uh, that wouldn't, I don't believe that would be a violation because it's between the hours of seven and eight, or whatever our hours are.
Does he still have a little time?
It would fall under amplified sound, which doesn't have a time restriction.
Yeah.
If it annoys somebody, the way y'all's law is written, if someone feels like it disturbs peace, quiet, and comfort of the neighborhood, it's illegal. But it's up to port-a-lotto, convict somebody, obviously.
Amplified sound, and definition of amplified sound, according to the ordinance, is that it can be heard beyond fifty feet, and the sound I'm talking about is well beyond five hundred feet.
Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Lassera, for your input. Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Lassera, for your input. Appreciate everything you do. Thank you. Anything else? Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Lassera spoken on item number four. Mr. Seines has had his opportunity to speak on item number four.
Is, yeah, the way y'all, it's written, if you enumerate various items you want to talk about, you get three minutes per item, when, when it comes up, so.
Sounds good.
See, yes.
Anyway, what's her, go ahead, Mr.-
So, Mark Seines, five oh one, Balcony Heights Road. So I did, I did want to, um, talk again about the, the noise ordinance violations that they need to be addressed, and evenly across for all citizens, regardless of title or position. So I did file a complaint, and I was told to get a recording of it, and because there was no way to determine if it was over the fifty foot, fifty-foot, um, determination or, or, um, criteria that's in, in the ordinance, so I did do a recording, and can clearly, I was five hundred feet away. And- This is from, I'm five hundred feet away from the plane. I complained about it, several other residents complained about it. My wife called me that she could hear inside our house, and our house is eighty feet from the curb, so it's definitely, um, a violation of the ordinance. It was filed, but no action was taken, so, um, I do believe that we need to encourage equal application of the law. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seines, very much for your comments. We appreciate you very much. Okay, now, is there anyone else? I don't think we have anybody else. Is anybody? Tip. So, we're done with that particular item?
May I?
Yes.
Be a recognized- For the, uh, legal, if, I would like to make a motion, so I just want to make sure and make it correctly, uh, to defer so that we could address these items individually. I like to include something with the decibels and put in specific language, so.
So at the end of this meeting, there's a section for future agenda items, where you can ask the city secretary to place those, and Mr. Sellers had the same, he wanted to bring this back as well, so that's where y'all can just say, hey, we'd like to see this on the next agenda as an action item, and that'll give y'all a chance to discuss and, and direct. At that point, if you want to say, hey, add decibels or add this, you can direct staff, legal and the city secretary bringing me back into ordinance with those things in it, and then at the following meeting, it could be approved.
Hernandez, great. Anybody else? Any more comments? Okay, so we close out this item. It's not an action item. Number five, but we're gonna move number five, go to number ten. Um, so we're gonna move that item, we'll come back to number five in a minute. Discussion regarding any parking ordinance for parking permits along the one hundred block of Leisure. Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I just wanted to address, we, we have a problem, I'm gonna say on the one hundred block of probably every street going down, gentlemen, Leisure, Vivian, and so on, and, and, and the problem is, we have people from the apartments at times just parking in front of all the houses, blocking, um, for the residents that could park there, and um, I think that we need, we've looked at an ordinance from a neighboring city, or I shouldn't say neighboring, but a local city, Alamo Heights, has a parking ordinance, and, uh, checking with the mayor and with the city administrator, uh, we have some, I guess you could say, some guidelines, but before I make any recommendation to the council, I would like to open it up for discussion for the citizens to be heard. I know that one of, uh, our residents, two of our residents are here to speak on that topic. Would that be okay for them to speak first?
Um, any, any objections from the council? Okay, I'm okay with it, as presiding officer. Okay, what about the resident? Come on up, ma'am. Please, you can speak at the podium.
Where they signed up?
Identify your name and where you live, please. Yes, ma'am.
Did they, I don't, I don't know that they signed up to speak.
Right, but, uh, I guess, I asked the council if anybody had any objections. As a presiding chair, I have the discretion to let anybody speak if they need to speak on any item.
Give me just a moment.
And Frank's always referred to me that, as presiding chair.
No, that's fine. I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking it through just briefly because we have been strict about it during this as a comment section, but yeah, y'all are allowed to hear from anybody you want at this point as a, it would be as like an invited guest, as though you had an expert in the audience or something.
Right.
I mean, it would be, you know, you can engage with whoever you like.
In that case, I would like to invite Irma and Bonnie to speak, maybe not as an expert, but as firsthand, you know, experience of what's going on.
So again, I'll ask the council, are there any objections to that? Okay, so we'll move forward. Go right ahead.
They don't need to be an expert. Relevant testimony is what I meant. Anybody that-
Yeah, relevant testimony.
The item pertains to.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Irma. Free Leisure Drive, which is very close to the apartments, and sometimes it would get really, really bad, and there would be many cars parked right in front of our home and across from our home, in front of the neighbor's home, at least to maybe four houses up Leisure, and they all live.
It's posed a problem to your neighborhood?
Very much so. Like, you know, you want to come out in front of your house, and you don't want to see-
Right.
We don't know them, we can't, we don't know, we can trust them, so, you know, why do they have the right to park there when there's plenty of parking at the apartments?
All right, anything else?
No, that's pretty much it. We just-
Councilman Eversole?
I have a question. Yes, is this, uh, like on the weekends? Is it Sundays, Sundays through Friday, all the time? Like, it can happen any day of the week? So it's not just a particular, like, they do it on Sundays or Saturdays? Okay, so what would you like, if you, if you wanted a policy, you would want something that goes like permanently, like, all the time?
I think it's because it's right there on Leisure, and that's in front of the apartments, because if you go to the other way, well, there's apartments, and if you go further that way, it would be too far for them to walk, so they just want to park right there to either watch their vehicles, or so they can just, instead of walking in the back where you know personally that they do, um, ask to get, for the residents of the apartments to pay for the covered parking, but there is uncovered parking that is free.
That was one of the things I was gonna say. One of the things that I don't like, but I still have to live with it, is like, if, if you have a sign up that says, if you're not a resident, then, and you're not registered, then they'll, they'll come tow your car off. Uh, it's kind of brutal. I came in, man, like, I went to apartment one time, and I didn't have it, came back out, my car had disappeared, but I, I didn't know I was supposed to register it, so, I mean, we could do something like that, or- So I don't know, there's, there's ways to, to work with this. I think we should just try and figure out what's the best solution in this application.
So, if I can proceed, um, speaking with Chief John Ahara, and also Rose Anderson, and Andy Joslin, our city administrator, um, what the findings were is that it, in Alamo Heights, rather than limiting the, uh, ordinance to a specific block or, or a specific street, they basically incorporated an ordinance that is citywide, and it essentially says that in the hours between, uh, two AM and seven AM, that you must have a parking permit to, to park during, during those hours, so you know, that gives plenty of time for people to park during the day, or even in the evenings, um, that don't have a parking permit, but it kind of from, uh, it prevents them from staying overnight, just coming home, parking the car in front of somebody's house, and then going into their apartment, and so the, uh, Alamo Heights has those little, uh, stickers, and we used to have them here in Balcony Heights, and so I'm suggesting to the council that if we put this ordinance in, in, in effect, essentially, uh, anybody that is a homeowner or a resident of one of the, the single-family homes could, could, uh, obtain one of those stickers and, uh, basically apply for a parking permit, and then if they have guests or something, maybe from out of town, or, or locally, if, uh, it's gonna spend the night, then they're allowed to call into the, to the non-emergency number and say, hey, I have a guest that's gonna be staying overnight. This is their plate number, and they're good, and that's how Alamo Heights handles it. I think that would be a great solution for our city.
Okay, Mr. Sellers, you have-
Good. Jimmy, I spoke with the chief of police last year about the very same situation you're talking about now. I was out walking a dog, and he was there looking at the cars. I'm under the impression from speaking with the chief that there's nothing we can legally do to remove those cars other than possibly painting a section of that curb red. I don't know.
Well, you yield the floor.
If I can defer to Andy Joslin on that regarding, because it's-
And, and that's a true statement, Councilman Mayor of I may?
Yes, sir.
That is a true statement, that the, the chief told, uh, Councilman Sellers that, because there's nothing in place right now, so we can't do that. If y'all enact whatever, uh, ordinance you'd like, then of course they would have leverage to, uh, enforce anything that's ordinance-related.
So, if I may, um, so basically, the, the city has the authority to enact any ordinance that is into the health, well-being, and safety of the community. So you have the power to do it, because this is an incorporated city. We're not part of San Antonio, we're not part of, well, we are part of Bear County, but not part of San Antonio. All ordinances are adopted, amended, and anything suggested by the council can be taken and action can be done. So all you need to do is come up, or get staff to come up with the language necessary to address the problem, and they will make sure that it meets code of the, um, of the ordinance, and then you enact it and adopt it, and you, it's done. So, go ahead, Mr. Burton.
Uh, I'd like to comment. I, I, I always thought that the apartment complexes, when you leased an apartment, they assigned you at least one or, or two covered spots. I, I know, I, I've seen thunderstorms and hailstorms where I thought about, hmm, should I go up and put my car underneath that, that awning, and no, I don't think it's a wise move. I don't want to come out there and see my truck gone, you know, and, and so, but they should be supplying residents with that parking. They shouldn't have to park on, I, I've never known them to do that, but it, it's an issue on, on my street too, and, and they park right up to the stop sign sometimes, and I, I'm curious why they don't get a ticket because they're so close to the stop sign, or if you're coming from, let's say, the Justice Center towards Vivian Lane, and you make a right-hand turn onto my street, they're parked all the way up to the corner. I've personally almost hit the vehicles that have, that have, that are right there on, on, on the corner, and, uh, it, it, it's, it's a nuisance, but just, just like when I lived at my other home in San Antonio, people would park for Oyster Bay. It's a public street. It's, it's not, it's not a city code, it's not a San Antonio code. That's Texas motor vehicle code, I believe. I'm not-
But you do have ordinances within our city that we can enact and enforce, and it, it, because we're an incorporated city, so we have our own ordinance.
And, and I, I get when, when you're, when you're backing out of your driveway, and you've got a person in back of your car that you're not normally used to when you're backing out of, oh, oh my gosh, I almost clipped that car, you know, even, I've got a camera, but, uh, it, it, you're not used to it being there, and you sometimes forget, you know, it, and therein lies the issue, or they park in front of a mailbox, and you don't get your mail for that day. You just kind of, sometimes you'll get the great post office guy that'll step out of his vehicle and throw the mail in there, sometimes you don't. He's just on a, on a cruise through there, so I, I get it, and I, I don't know what the answer is, other than forcing the apartments to give their, their, uh, residents ample parking for their rent. That's-
Well, Mr. Burton, um, they do have parking available. It's just more convenient to park across the street.
Right.
So, it, just to, um, reiterate everything, and we've discussed it very good, given it's a good time, Ms. More height, War height, Ms. War height, rest assured, we're on top of it. Councilman Hernandez is gonna definitely spearhead this operation, and it's gonna be part of our code compliance that we're putting together this task force. Mr. Joslin was part of that discussion, uh, earlier, and we will have this task force put together pretty soon, because I'm gonna be pushing, make sure it gets done, and so that we can address these things, because it also goes hand in hand where, with our economic development projects that we're proposing as well. We're wanting businesses to come in. We want to make sure that the, uh, condition and the, the site of our city is one that's conducive for them to want to invest into our community. So it works hand in hand all around. Rest assured, we'll take care of this. And Mr. Hernandez is gonna be on top of it to make sure. Go get with staff.
Thank you for coming down.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. We'll address it. So now we've finished with item ten, let's go back to item number five. On which one? Okay, go right ahead. Thank you for reminding me. Um, Mr. Seines, you have three minutes again on this subject. Go right ahead.
Seines, five oh one, Balcony Heights Road. So I wanted to ask the council to, um, consider again the full ramifications of this decision if they do decide to uh, move forward and do a parking ordinance. So, um, I think what, one of the things that the resident was complaining about was people that live at the apartments are parking along Leisure Drive, so how do we differentiate between apartment residents and, you know, people that live in single-family homes? So your ordinance, if you're, would affect guests and be impactful that way, um, but it wouldn't impact residents that are parking along Leisure Drive or other streets, such as Mr. Burton's Street as well. So if they're residents, and they have that Balcony Heights sticker, it's still gonna have the same impact. We can't do anything about it, like Mr. Sellers had said. So we, and I had this discussion with, uh, Chief Jahanara over multiple, um, months, uh, because they, they had brought this up last year, and at that time, it was determined because it was a public street, and because they were residents, that there was nothing that could be done legally on behalf of the city.
In our research, we're talking about only issuing permits to the, uh, people that live in the single-family homes, the permits.
Isn't that discriminatory, I would ask? So, and also to Mr. Burton's point about the apartments, they charge for the covered parking, and the free parking is very limited. It's, it's un, it's, so, um, I used to live in apartments. I know it was very, very difficult to find parking in the, the free areas, so you had to park either very far away or find closer parking on a public street. So those are the, uh, the points I had. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seines. Again, everything's gonna be taken in consideration. The studies will be done to address it, and we'll consider all your comments, as well as everyone else, and the residents as well. Yes, go ahead. Did you want to respond to him?
No, just one more thing. You know, I, I can get twenty reasons why I can't do it. I just want one, how we can do it.
Okay, um, Mr. Lassera, number ten. Okay, good. All right, so then you don't need to come up. Thank you, Mr. Lassera. All right, now, we have finished with that item. If there's no more discussion, let's go now back to item number five. Uh, discussion and possible action pertaining to the city annex office at Woda. Mr. Joslin?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. This has been a, a topic of discussion prior to my arrival, and it's been brought to the council, uh, but didn't get addressed, so I'm looking for some guidance in this. We have a office that was prepared for the city of Balcony Heights at the Wonderland of American malls, and I want to know what direction you want us to go forth, uh, to occupy or not occupy.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, you sure.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we go into executive session to discuss this.
Okay, we have a recommendation, so we'll go in executive session to discuss this very quickly.
And would that be seeking-
This would be under contracts, um, lease, um, that we're fall under that category. Consultation with attorney on contracts and-
That's what I'm asking. Yeah, consultation with attorney is one.
Uh-huh, consultation with attorney.
There are other exceptions that may apply.
Right. Which others would you recommend, besides that?
Uh, that's fine. Conversation with attorney is fine if you have questions from me, but if y'all just want to discuss.
We sure do.
Okay.
Great. Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, the time is right now, seven forty-five PM. We're gonna go in executive session to discuss this, and then we'll notify you as soon as we come out. Thank you for your patience. Please go to restroom. Moving into open session, coming out of executive session, time is eight fifteen. Time is eight fifteen PM. So we have an item on the agenda that we need to uh, discuss, or we don't know more discussion. We just need to move on it. Oops, ups, ups. Got it. Okay, do we have a motion on the floor? Do you want to go ahead and talk? Go right ahead, sir. Item number five.
Thank you, Mark Science, five one one about Conus Heights Road. So again, I want to encourage the council members to consider all of the costs that are associated with this. I know there's been rumors that the rent was only a dollar for a year. And we even had somebody that volunteered to pay for that. But what they were neglecting to uh, realize is that inside the contract, there are hidden fees, triple net fees that amount to thousands and thousands of dollars for our city. Um, we're we're having to pay maintenance costs for common areas. We're having to pay for security costs. All those add up. So again, our city does have a very limited budget. And that is something that needs to be taken into consideration when you're looking at these kind of contracts. So even though upfront it says only $1, we're actually, if you go through with this and approve the this annex, then you're actually putting the city on the on the hook for several thousands. It's actually, um, Mr. Messick, could you give some, I I think it was over $20,000 um, total for the triple net or?
We'll instruct Mr. Messick if he needs to answer anything. Staff will do that. So Mr. Josman has the authority under administration if he wants to respond. But right now you're addressing the city council.
So yeah, so when I did the math, there's over $20,000. So that is something that you all definitely need to consider because it is a a big expense for a city of our size with our budget challenges. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Science. Mr. LaSaya?
Members of council, thank you for granting me the opportunity. E- exactly. The the verbiage is kind of vague. What is it that we're discussing or that you guys are gonna be voting on today?
Approve the contract, standard lease contract.
Standard, standard. What what is the final cost on that?
The final cost is going to be, what was the amount that you had? You have the common area maintenance charges, tax charges, insurance charges, nothing different than what we had in the Senator's office. All the same.
I'm not I'm not I'm not interested in the in the Senator's office.
Answering your question, same amount, same amount. We're spending there, we're gonna be spending over.
What what is that dollar amount, please?
Ask the, ask our staff about that.
We talked about the the costs associated and it's been listed as minimum recurring charges, $800 a month or $9,600 a year. It breaks it down into what's there and those charges have been uh, expensed to date.
Okay.
Sam, any other questions?
What what was that? The final total number for for the year for the 16? And then the the other thing, what is the date? What is the date on that contract?
For one year.
I understand that, but what is the dates of that contract? The initiate and the ending date?
Date of the lease, November sixth, twenty twenty-four. And um, the lease term shall commencement date, which we just gave you, and it'll terminate on May thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Good. So with that information being said, you're willing to backdate a contract and deprive citizens of tax dollars to pay for something that we have not used.
Lease commencement date is October first, expiration, May thirty-fourth, twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, thank you. So that moves us back a month even further. So so we're so so we're willing to accept that we're gonna give away tax dollars that we worked hard for for something that hasn't been used. I I I would like to get an answer. Are we willing to do that? Why are we willing to do that?
Any other questions?
I'm I'm asking a question. We're in a discussion.
It's public comment, so your your answers have to be limited to existing policies or facts? If it's a question, I something happened.
So your answer, your question is not.
My question is is.
You can ask the question. Y'all are prohibited by law from answering unless it's unless it's something like what time is the parade Sunday? Like factual, you know, or what's the personnel policy on this or that? Some facts kind of base question.
Am I right? Counsel is. You go with the head.
But I I I think I still have the floor, Mayor.
And so, because we need to move to.
I, Mayor. Uh, uh, under under items, there is no limit, sir. So even under open, open, right? Okay, so ju- Okay, I I I do know that and I knew that before I'd done, I just want to make sure that you guys understand that you are backdating a contract, a legal document, you are backdating and accepting fees that should not be paid, in my opinion. You are backdating a contract. I I appreciate you.
So we have an item on the agenda for discussion, I mean, rather for um, review from the council. And we've talked about it in executive session. We've had any comments from citizens come forward. So let's go ahead and entertain a motion. Do we have a motion? How many of you council members?
I do.
Motion on the floor?
Second.
No, no, we have a motion on the floor to uh, discussion, possible action, city annex office. Either accept or reject.
I have a motion.
Hey, but I haven't recognized you. I'm asking Mr. Everstall.
What I need to do, I need to recommend that we.
You what?
Table.
You recommend that you.
You want to enter? I recommend. Enter into a lease?
You enter into lease.
So there'd be motion to enter into a lease for the city annex.
Okay, I wanna recommend that we enter into a lease with Wonderland of Americas.
Hey, do we have a second to that?
The city, the city annex.
The city annex office.
Do we have a second to that motion? Mr. Science, please do not disrupt the council meeting. We have an attorney that give us advice. Do we have a second to that motion?
You have a motion. You have a motion right now. You don't have a second.
That's why I'm asking for it. Do we have a second to approve the contract?
No.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second for Mr. Burton. Okay, so let's go ahead and call for the vote. Mr. Everstall, more discussion?
There's more.
Do you want more discussion? Okay, Mr. Sellers, go right ahead.
I just strongly recommend that y'all rethink this, do your own research. Uh, you're being you're being bullied into making this decision.
That's incorrect, sir.
Yes, it is.
Nobody bullying anybody. And please, no clapping from the cloud, please, crowd. We ask you to maintain your decorum. Okay, this is a thing involving the city council. No one is bullying anybody and quit making false statements about individuals. Okay, nobody is bullying anybody. You have free will to do what you need to do here. Mr. Hernandez, please.
So I have a question to Mr. Joslin. Is this something that, or even council regarding the backdating of the contract, is that something that we could, uh, you know, change that with or propose that contract to be, you know, starting from today forward with the?
If you direct the uh, city staff and legal to update that before signing, you can make that in.
Yeah, y'all, I don't think you'd be able to enter into it back backwards. Like, it's gonna be a prospective one year lease.
Prospective, okay. Thank you.
Mayor, excuse me, microphone, please.
Was way back before the previous council, you know, basically for political reasons, took it away and dissolved it. This is something that their last administrator did, not me. Everyone wants to try to blame me, but that's not a true statement. It was the former city administrator that initiated this and the former council is the one that removed it. Okay, so what Mr. Um, Weiss did was he created this new lease on this date. And at that point, the council did not do anything about it. And it sat and sat and sat. So whatever needs to be done, we have to go back, Mr. Weiss, and have him recreate a contract and let him do it. But basically, we just need motion on whether you're gonna move forward with it or not. Yes, Mr. Hernandez.
Again, I uh, referred to Andy Joslin. This is your recommendation for the council to enter into the lease with Woda.
It's recommended to move forward on it.
Okay.
May I be recognized? I didn't use my four three minutes. Well, you made you made some some.
A vote on the floor.
Incorrect statements previously.
It doesn't make a difference.
It does make a difference because it's it's.
Statements, I don't want to debate with you. I'm not gonna let you draw.
I'm just asking you to let me finish my three minutes.
Please take a seat. Please sit down.
I just want to say that the the previous council was not brought into this discussion prior to.
Sir.
Try to discuss.
Please go sit down.
Air wouldn't allow us to.
Please go sit down. We're disrupting the meeting. We have a vote. Mr. Burton. But we're voting now. We've got a motion and you second the motion.
Yeah.
So now we're gonna call for the vote.
You had a motion here and you seconded it.
That is correct.
Yes.
So what is your vote?
And it's to enter into a one-year lease for city annex at Woda.
And sir, please quit disrupting the meeting. I haven't warned you again. This is your third time. Stop it or remove you. No more.
Again, this is at the recommendation of of the city manager, correct?
The administrator.
The administrator, yes, correct.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Sellers.
No.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez.
Yay.
Mr. Everstall.
Yes.
Miss Weaver.
Yes.
Okay, we have four to one name. Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Let's move on to the next item on the agenda. Okay. Item number six, discussion and possible action to amend the council relations policy, code of ethics regarding preparation of the agenda, specifically chapter V, article B, paragraph two, section C, which states the mayor or any council member may request an agenda item to be placed on any regular or special meeting as long as the request is submitted by twelve PM. DST, five business days prior to the council meeting for an action item at and twelve PM CST, three business days prior to the council meeting for a discussion item. This was an item that was placed on, is very restrictive by the past city council. I wanted to make sure we address it, reverse it, and let's go back to what we originally used to operate with. So um, I need a motion on the floor so that we can have a second and then we'll go call for discussion. And then we move forward with the vote. We have a motion on the floor for discussion. Okay, that's right. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mark Science, five one one about Conus Heights Road. So what the mayor said is incorrect. This wasn't put in to be a restrictive item. What what it was done is to make sure that there was fairness and equity across the council, including the mayor, to ensure that the agenda was uh, put in place correctly and that nobody had any kind of power to to reverse or undermine the will of a council member or the thought process of a council member. So as an example, there were agenda items that were placed on on the agenda last year, uh, September of twenty twenty-four, to be exact, where they were submitted by by the council members um, Wednesday prior to the the scheduled meeting as required. The following day, Thursday, the mayor submitted other agenda items that were the exact opposite of those agenda items and.
Please don't specify individual that you're referring to.
It's it's a it's a factual.
You're just talking about.
It's a factual statement.
No, sir, you're making an assessment that.
It's a factual statement. I have the.
To the governmental body, but making false statements.
It was not a false statement, sir.
It's to be disputable.
It's not disputable. It's it's in black and white.
Attorney, he's instructed.
So if you're talking about a past action or your perception of a past action of an elected official, that's fine. Yeah, that's not gonna be a personal attack. If it's something they did or you think they did, that's.
Thank you. So again, and I'll take that three minutes, uh, that credit, time credit back to my three minutes. Thank you. So the mayor, the following Thursday, put agenda items that were the exact opposite of the agenda items that had been submitted by the council and placed them immediately prior to those agenda items. So that way, when we got to the mayor's agenda item and I was disgusted, it was undermining the other agenda item. So instead of just discussing the agenda items as should be done, the mayor was undermining that. So in an attempt to make sure that city council members did not have to worry about this, this agenda, this ordinance was put in place, this code of ethics was updated to ensure that there was fairness across the board. So all council members and the mayor are held to the same standard. So I don't see how that's restrictive for council members and I don't see how it's unfair. So I would encourage the council members to um, make sure that this this code of ethics update that was put in again for equity and for fairness is maintained. Thank you.
Mr. Science, I'd like to address some of the statements you made, if I may, in reference.
As long as I get a chance to respond.
So you got, you just get the three minutes.
Three minutes.
So if you're, say whatever you like and then.
Yeah.
Okay, well, go ahead and lie about me.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Science. So.
I'd like to make a a comment.
Yes, sir.
There was recently a special meeting, the three council members signed a sp- a special meeting. And I didn't know till a couple of days before the meeting, I did not have a chance to put anything on the agenda. It was done under the table. Uh, as and I didn't, I didn't get a chance to put my stuff on the agenda. It was a special called meeting. So it works both ways.
Thank you, Mr. Burton, for that very important observation. And that's what I was gonna tell you, Mr. Science. Can't have it both ways. No, um, basically, what you need to do is I'm responding to Mr. Burton. And I just let you know that the statements that you make are always inflammatory in the sense that you're not giving the people the full information. Now, if you're referring to when you were wanting to, when there was a conflict of interest of the city attorney wanting to act.
There was no conflict of interest.
And I had to put an item on the agenda that said that that is illegal or it was a conflict of interest that you could not act as the employment agency to hire a new city administrator, then you're absolutely right. And I proudly put that on there because it prevented you guys from going over and steamrolling what you wanted to do. So I was able to to foresee that. And I placed that item on the agenda to give the council an opportunity to see very clearly what y'all were trying to do and the backroom deals you were trying to do. And I prevented that and we did not have our city attorney act as the hiring authority or as the fielding authority to select a new city administrator. And I told you guys that you needed to follow industry-related practices in hiring people. Even went to the trouble of getting an RFQ, an RFP, or finding a qualified candidate so that the backdoor.
If we can just bring the discussion back.
Yeah.
This is just whether y'all want to change the schedule.
Exactly.
An agenda item or not.
So that's.
Again, you're you're mis- you're misstating.
Meeting if I could add.
Okay, good. Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate that.
Three, the mayor can call a special meeting on his own.
That's correct.
And the Open Meetings Act requires seventy-two hours.
That's correct.
Three council members can force the mayor to call a meeting.
That's correct.
But it's still seventy-two hours. So there is some conflict between requiring, you know, giving you five days to put something on an agenda and state law, which only requires three days notice for the meeting.
So it's too cumbersome. We just need to remove it. Give the council members, even up to the last day if they want to.
So then give all council members the same courtesy.
Thank you, Mr. Science. Appreciate your comment. Um, so I'm addressing the city council now. You're 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 done. Thank you. You can you can take a seat.
I just want to say you're you're misstating the situation that happened.
So, uh, council, basically the decision you need to make here is to make it easier for Lisa as well. We had a discussion about this and I mentioned it. And as would it make it easier? She said of all means it would. Lisa, with the permission of the city administrator, um, and I don't want to put you on the spot. But I I just want to say that it does make it easier for you, right? Correct?
Just make it try and understand the question. It's easier if.
To remove this language that we have.
But it's.
To where the council members have until the very last day to place an item on the.
Is it easier for you if they can do it till the last minute or is it better if they have five?
Because you have the ten days and everybody misses it, you know, things like that.
My role is a city secretary. I'm here to serve. And whatever it is, whatever is best for the city, I'm gonna do.
Good answer. Okay, good, yeah. So go ahead, Jack.
I was gonna ask her if that was gonna create a burden on you. That's that's was my question.
That was my answer, Mr. Burton, and I can repeat it.
Good. Councilman Sellers?
Yes, I just think that uh, this agenda, this agenda action here is fine the way it is. And the meeting that um, Jack was talking about, he had three. Jack was talking about, he had three business days to put something on the agenda. That was plenty of time for that. And the way the mayor wants is up until the last day does does not give fair amount of time to research that topic on the agenda and be prepared in that meeting. And I strongly recommend against changing this. This is fair all across the board, as is.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sellers. And just real quick in closing, you realize, Mr. Sellers, that this ordinance, or rather, this particular item, for many, many years, under the past administration, under the past council members, was in place and it never was questioned until I became the mayor and they changed it. So just think of that, okay? Go ahead, Mr. Hernandez.
I just want to refer back. I'm not sure if it was Andy or council that said something about the Texas standard.
The city has to post an agenda, regular or special meeting, either way, three days, seventy-two hours before. So for a Monday meeting at six o'clock, the latest we can post the agenda on the website and at the front door is six o'clock on Friday. But we've got to have time. If y'all walk in at five fifty-five and say I want something on the agenda, probably are gonna not be able to meet that, right? So a lot of cities will have a local rule like this where, and it's arbitrary, it's whatever y'all want. But at what point is the cutoff for somebody to run in with?
Right.
Hey, I want, I want to talk about this on Monday, right?
But my question is, what is the Texas standard?
Seventy-two hours.
Seventy-two. And what is our current?
You have, you have two rules. If it's an action item, it's gotta be five days. It's gotta be by noon on Wednesday, basically. If it's a discussion-only item, you can go up to noon on.
Okay.
That is a fair.
Hello, Mr. Sellers.
It says twelve P M. C S T, three business days for a discussion-only item. Three days prior to the council meeting. Yeah, twelve P M. C S T, three business days. Oh, business days. Got you. So it'd be five business days, Wednesday for.
Enough.
Discussion only items. What, the previous Friday for your?
Next time. Not right now. We'll remove on.
Five businesses would be previous Monday.
I'll have them on.
Okay, well, so Monday, Wednesday, scheduled to get things on there.
And see, Mr. Ms. Merle, if I may, ask for the benefit of the rest of the council members. Explain to everybody how it worked for many, many years before this took place. How it was, council members were able to put items on the agenda. It was not a problem. Explain to them what the past rule was, what the original rule was.
The old version I've got is actually six business days. We all reduced it.
And then on the ten days that was injected in there, we didn't have that language in there.
Just got the last, I got the version that prior to the last update, which is six, six business days and then three business.
Yeah, can you clarify?
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Can you clarify that for us?
Um, how it worked before, previously. So that was, um, um, Delia Sanchez was the city secretary before me and those were the, basically, the rules.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, Mr. Burton, you are basically aware because you were in the city council prior to and they were able to come in and ask for an agenda item, request it. You know, the three days or the seventy-two hours before, which it worked fine. Uh, my role as a city secretary, I'm here to serve and I'm here to serve the city council and of course the residents and whatever it is, you know, that works best for you and for the benefit of the city, I'm gonna do that.
Okay, thank you very much. So it worked before.
Thank you.
So we're gonna end the discussion now because we've had too much. It's coming up on fifteen minutes to nine. I want everybody to get home.
Make a motion.
Hold on. So we're gonna end the discussion right now.
You got a motion here.
Yes, we're recognized. Just a minute. So we've had everybody that needed to speak on this item, correct? That wanted citizens to be heard. Okay, Mr. LaSalle. Number six item is not on your sheet here. You only have four, five, and seven, and nine and ten.
Okay.
You can't speak.
Okay.
You can't speak.
Okay, and.
Move on, please. Thank you. We'll move on and like you say, the need was made, so you came. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, sir, very much. Thank you. I think the citizens already need to move forward so we can move the meeting.
I'm ready for a motion.
Gotta get it officially going on. Okay, Councilman Sellers, you have the floor.
I make a motion to deny this request.
Okay. Do we have a second to Councilman Sellers' motion? Okay, motion dies for lack of a second. Do we have another motion on the floor?
Make a motion proof.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
And you're gonna have to clarify that. The action item here is just to amend. What's the amendment gonna be? Do you want to change the times and dates or you're saying strip this rule out altogether? Um, this rule also includes the bit about when you file the form, it's gotta have the name of the department or the person filed the request, so on and so forth. Do you want to leave that in because it's technically part of subsection C?
And just for clarification, Mr. Burton, the intent was just to go back to the original language that was in the, in the, in the section.
And we, you're just gonna have to find a way to word that. And if you can tell me what that is, I'll.
Can you pull that up for us, Lisa?
The version I've got is even more, it says six days, so I clearly don't have the right version.
Does, can I, can I just say it to rescind the previous?
It, it's a likely, yeah. Okay, this is your twenty nineteen version.
Counselor, it's as easy as just saying he wants to rescind this item and go back to the original language of that.
Like four different times. So.
What's that?
This has been amended like four different times.
Oh, it has, okay.
So if, that's what I'm saying. If you could just say amend it to.
Can, can I make a motion to amend it to the Texas standard?
So that you can submit this up to seventy-two hours before the meeting, three business.
Yes.
Okay, do you accept your colleague's amendment? Okay, do we, can we, now we move over. You had a motion on the floor. Yeah.
Dangerous language.
To go with the standards.
Regardless of whether it's actual or discussion, it just needs to be submitted seventy-two hours. Do you want to do seventy-three hours? I wish she's got one hour to put it on the agenda. Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
Um, very good. We can do that.
Just gives flexibility.
So you got a motion then.
Okay, so we have a second to that motion?
Again, what's so funny over there? Let it, let me in on the joke. I want to laugh. Really?
See, I've asked you guys, you're former city council members. It's obvious you've come over here to try and disrupt the meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, may I speak?
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
The two of you did enough damage when you were on the council being rude and disrespectful. Now that you're not council member, you're still continuing to do the same thing. Does that show that you've matured at all? Or is it that you're just still playing around?
If y'all can just direct, it's on the presiding officer.
Please stop, guys. You're making a fool of yourselves in front of the public. Stop. Your days are over. The public spoke loud and clear in the mandate to remove you from city council because of your actions.
So y'all got a motion.
We have a motion.
To take it to seventy-two hours.
Correct. Seventy-two hours. So let's call the vote now. Do we have a second to the motion?
Yes, I second.
Second. Well, are you the second, Jack?
I'm second. No, Jimmy made.
Jimmy amended it, made the motion. So you're gonna second it, right? Correct, Jack? Is that okay, counselor?
It's fine.
Okay, let's call the vote. Ms. Weaver? Okay, Mr. Eversol?
Aye.
Mr. Hernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Sellers?
No.
Okay, Mr. Burton?
Yeah.
Okay, motion carries four to one name. Okay, thank you very much. I'm sorry, people, that we have these disruptive former council members that are doing what they're doing. But I've already told them this is their last. Bailey, you, you see what's going on. I've been very patient. So the moment I ask you, we're just gonna have to remove them. I'm not gonna allow them to continue to disrupt like they've done in the past. And any other council member that gets out of hand as well. We are gonna move this and change the city's direction. So we are now number seven, discussion and possible action to seek grants or funding for bus benches and covers along Gentleman Road. Mr. Burton, if we can move pretty quickly on this.
Yes.
We're running behind because of what's happened.
Uh, thank you, mayor. I was asked by a citizen uh, about the amount of children from the apartments and waiting for school in inclement weather and having to sit on the curb and stuff. And that's, that's what they suggested, bus benches. I, I didn't necessarily say an enclosure or anything like that, but at least bus benches to pull them in back of the sidewalk and contrary to what the former mayor said earlier, I don't think it's, or, or she was speaking on behalf of Madeline Slay. I don't think it's gonna bring property values down or anything like that. I think this can be done through, I think I had a brief discussion, or a good discussion, but a brief passing by, let's just say, of funding it through child safety. Is that possible, Mr. Missick?
It depends on the cost, sir, but that would be an appropriate fund.
And I, I would, I would even, I would even direct to go for, you know, a business or something of that matter to
Yeah.
to help fund that on top of the, the.
Private city partnership.
A private partnership. We've got many businesses that can, that can do that. And sometimes you don't see the forest for the trees, but you know, if you get up in the morning and you see the amount of children at these apartments, uh, it, there's, there's a lot of them and the buses make frequent stops and I can see it on the way home, you know, the. Of course, they wouldn't utilize it on the way home, but I see the amount of kids that get dropped off by the S, S A I S D buses. And there's, there's a need for it. I'm, I'm, I don't, again, I don't think it's asking for too much. And it's a tangible thing to give back to the, the citizens because they're citizens too, uh, for child safety. So that, that's basically my.
Mr. Burton, I want to commend you for looking at that and looking after the children and the child safety. You're to be commended for at least bringing this up to our attention so we can consider it. We have Mark Science who wants to speak on item number seven.
Thank you, Mark Science, five one, about Conusiz Road. So I want to encourage the council members to, before they direct staff and, you know, approve the funding for the bus benches to consider directing city staff to identify what those costs would be to incur, would be incurred to the city to do this kind of thing. So I'm not, I'm not sure if it's legally allowable for the city to put public benches or pay for something like that on private property. So we would need to look into that. We need, need to look into theirs, if there's engineering expenses that would be incurred for the city, uh, how many benches we would need, when, which locations they would be placed and why only on Gentleman Road. Uh, there are other areas along Fredericksburg where there are apartments with kids that have the same situation. There's also kids that live within the single-family home areas that could benefit from something like this as well. So I think more research is needed into this to find out exactly how much is each bench gonna cost? Is there engineering required? If it can't be put on public property or if a public-funded bench can't be put on private property, do we have to do eminent domain to purchase that property from them so we can be allowed to put that, those benches in place? Um, we also need to look at what type of enclosures are gonna be put there. Is it just gonna be a bench? Because if it's just a bench, it doesn't really help with the rain, which is your primary concern, right? So that, that was, that was the concern you brought up during the council meeting last month. So we need to look at the types of enclosures or type of structures that Mr. Burton is proposing. So I'm not saying don't do it. I'm just saying get the information beforehand before you make a decision to approve.
If you can sit there and you can give me ten reasons.
I'm not giving you.
Excuse me, you can give me ten reasons why I can't do it. Give me one reason why I can.
So we're, we're again, if you can refrain from responding, it's a public comment. So.
I understand. Thank you.
Put it to an item on the agenda which he can retort.
It's, you can discuss amongst yourselves whatever you like, but the comments will be directed at council rather than out to the public and vice versa, right? So.
Again, I'm not saying don't do it at all. I'm saying get the information beforehand. Before you say, yes, let's do it, get the information you need beforehand. Find out exactly how much it's gonna cost if there's engineering involved. You know, how many benches do we need? Is it one bench at Boston Woods or is it five, five benches along on both sides of Gentleman Road? Or do we need to put them on Fredericksburg Road as well? We have many, many Hillcrest. We have many, many apartments in the area. We need to find out exactly how much it's gonna cost our city before we say, yes, do it.
Okay.
That's all I ask.
Thanks for your input. Appreciate it.
May I be recognized?
Oh.
Mr. LaSalle, you're, you're up for this item as well?
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I'll also just pretty much gonna echo what Mr. Science says. And I do really appreciate what you had said, Mr. Burton, about the child safety fund. I think that's a very good idea that we implement those fees for child safety. And particularly, let's take that money that we're gonna look at benches and use it for our police department. We keep looking, it's my understanding you guys are looking at defunding the police department. Let's use some of that fund from that area towards the police instead of the benches. I think our community would benefit greatly from police services opposed to benches. Thank you.
Yes, may I be.
I have a question.
We'll talk to each other about that.
I have a question for the city administrator. Maybe Floyd can answer this. Is, is child safety offense fund?
Yes, sir, it is.
So it couldn't be used to move into the P V to?
That would be my first instinct. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez? Councilman Hernandez?
Yes, just real quick, the last comment that Mr. LaSalle said, this is the first I've heard of defunding the police department. That's ludicrous. However, I do want to comment, uh, I think Mr. Science has made a couple of great suggestions as far as getting some information on prices and, and location. However, the, the action item is to seek grants for the bus benches. So I make a motion to approve seeking grants for the bus benches.
Okay, a motion has been made to the board, uh, to the council. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, a second to that motion. Any further discussion from the council? Okay, let's call for the vote. Ms. Weaver?
Yay.
Mr. Eversol?
Aye.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yay.
Mr. Sellers?
No.
Mr. Burton? Again, we have a four, one name. Okay, so for the benefit of the community, none of us on this council and myself have ever said that outright, just vicious lie that we're gonna defund the police. That is an outright lie.
And again, we don't have, we don't have an agenda item for that, so you'll have to move.
Address. It needs to be addressed. It's an outright lie. No, you may not, sir. Sit down, please. Sit down, please. Move him out. Bye-bye, sir. That was the last time I gave a chance I gave you. I'm not gonna tolerate anymore. Sir, please leave the premises. You've disrupted us enough. That's going to melt, sir, please. Okay, so now we have item number eight, discussion and possible action to direct staff to seek grants or funding for a digital sign for the Justice Center. Mr. Burton, you have the floor? If we can move quickly on that.
Yes, again, this is just to, to, to look into. I've spoke with Mr. Jocelyn about this and the aesthetics of it. I don't, I don't know where we would get the funding for it. I'm sorry?
Go ahead, Mr. Burton.
I don't know where we would get the, the funding on this because it isn't unfunded. But I, some suggestions on my part would be possibly, you know, art hospital, Chick-fil-A, uh, prominent business target and I think, you, you, did you come up with the price on it, an estimate or?
There's, there's several pricing quotes in the agenda packet. So it's a matter of us looking forward and we're in budget season. We're gonna start during budget season. It can be something on the unfunded list and we.
And, and just to shorten this, this topic up, this, this can just be a discussion item at this moment. And let's, let's move forward and see if we can't find some, some monies from a business or where it's at no cost to the city.
Yeah, this would be, this will be an item that comes up in your budget, but if the, if you want, it doesn't have to be denied, but the action item, I think you're describing would be to direct staff to look for opportunities or yeah, seek a advertising opportunity, bring, bring that proposal back to y'all.
Councilman?
May I?
Go ahead.
Again, the action item is to seek grants for funding and so I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Second, then Councilman Burton. Any other discussion? Haven't you already spoken on this subject? Am I mistaken? Number eight, so he has to, there's another item. Okay, go ahead. We'll call the vote in a minute. Item number eight, Mr. Seines.
Probably moot point because it'll probably pass four to one. But I do want to state that when you start seeking grants, you're, you're actually already starting the expenditure process. So you're, you're asking for matching funds from the state or from the government to give you money for this event. So before you actually seek the grants, I highly recommend getting the, the quotes for the price for the sign, how much it's going to cost to have it installed and then to run it, what kind of software do we need, et cetera? So get that information first before you go and start seeking grants. So that's my, my recommendation.
So in response to that, we're not looking for government grants. We're looking for private or commercial businesses.
The, the motion was just grants.
Yes, it does. It says to seek grants or funding.
And the motion on the table right now is just to seek grants, period, whether that was, regardless of the source. It's direct staff, hey.
And we're going to give them that information to seek it.
Yeah, or funding. Exactly.
Well, he didn't say funding. He's looking for free money.
No, but the item on the agenda is.
Yes, and the motion on the table though is to seek grants, meaning money from the outside being donated to the city.
Clarify, counsel, read exactly what the item on number eight says, if that's your intent and make that your motion so that he can move forward. We'll direct staff, look for it, seek grants, find out if it's something the city can afford to do or not. It's basically given direction to get some discovery done. That's all.
So there's not been a second yet. If you want to amend your motion.
So amend the motion to move forward to seek funding for bus benches and cover along Gentleman Road.
No, no, this is for the signs.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Read number eight and that's, put you in the ballpark.
All right, then I move amend the motion to seek grants or funding for the digital sign for the justice.
And there was, there was no second previously, right?
So.
Okay, so.
We have a second on the floor now?
My second.
Okay, Councilman Ebersol's second. Now let's call for the vote. Ms. Weaver?
Right, I have a question.
Okay.
It's not for the discussion?
You want to have a discussion? I'll allow it. Go ahead.
Mr. Hernandez, I, I seriously think y'all need to do your own research. He had an excellent point about finding out what it's going to cost before you ask for a grant. You don't have a clue how much to ask for a grant. We need to find out what it's going to cost for the sign, what it's going to cost to install the sign. Those are the steps you take before you ask for a grant. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor?
No, exactly. It's what I was just saying a minute ago. We won't ask for anything until we know how much it's going to cost. And all of the other questions that you said, common sense tells you, you don't go ask for something if you don't know what you're asking for. So therefore we'd have to look up all the information and then go ask for it, which is normal.
Okay, so.
They worded it like that?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll have to do that. We'll.
That's how it is.
This triple.
Yeah, we'll move, we've got a motion on the floor.
Yeah, it's the direct staff just to bring y'all back more information.
He's already made the motion.
Yeah.
Ms. Weaver?
Second.
You know, we have a second, so he just. Yea or nay?
Pardon?
Yea or nay?
Yay.
Yea. Mr. Ebersol?
Yay.
Mr. Hernandez?
Yay.
Mr. Sellers? Mr. Burton?
Yay.
All right, four to one, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. We're moving pretty quickly now. Item number one, discussion impossible action, retain a consultant to review, update all city codes. Councilman Ebersol.
Last year I started a business alliance in Balcony Heights. And I have heard so many negative comments from the businesses that I, I could hardly believe it, but I had been affected by them as well. And so when I got elected, I decided I would put this as an agenda item to review, review the city codes, modern, my agenda item says modernization of city codes to support economic redevelopment and growth, reduce property tax burdens and incentives, incentivize improvements that beautify the city and make codes easy to read and financially feasible to implement. I also, this is a, that's my agenda item and I'm also asking for action. I would like to put a committee of five people together and I would like to chair that committee. I would like to have some of the people who like it, like tonight was a fine example. We had codes that were, were already complaining about some of the codes that didn't work or don't adapt or everything. I think those are, it's still, we're just still bouncing off codes that no one's taking a hard look. I've been on both sides of the fence and I think it's time to take a look at the codes. One of the, the cities that I did talk to said they put a comment at the bottom of the code to describe how the code actually works for that application. Like that we're talking about lights and audio and all that. There'll be a little paragraph or a little statement at the bottom that would show how that would be implemented. I just think it's really important after talking to all like citizens, there's, there's, there's issues on citizens and there's also on businesses. So and, and the apartment complexes, I've heard, I've heard negative comments and they're not very pretty at all. And I'd like to make, can I make a motion?
Yes, sir, you can.
Okay, I.
But before you do, there's input by the citizens that want to come up and speak.
Okay.
So we have Mr. Mark Seines again under item number nine. Mr. Lamar Gillian is not here, so is your.
Yeah, so thank you. Again, I want to encourage the council members to, before you take action to retain a consultant to review and update all the codes, find out how much it's going to cost, right? Again, again, last, last month, Councilman Burton complained about our council, our special meeting and how much that was costing the city. That cost the city next to nothing. It cost, you know, maybe a little bit of overtime for an employer or two. Hiring a consultant, you're, you're talking about hiring a law, no, no. Hiring a consultant, you're talking about hiring law firms to review legal documents. So you're talking about hiring a, a law firm, not just one attorney, and they're going to be charging, God knows how much. So we need to find out how much that's going to be before we go and retain that consultant. Again, that's all I'm encouraging you all to do is to find out how much these are, these propositions are going to cost the city before we actually take action and approve them. Okay, I'm not saying don't hire a consultant. Find out how much it's going to be. Maybe put out an RFP to find out what consultants are out there that will provide this information for us and they'll give us the money, the cost upfront. So fair, transparent process to know how much it's going to cost the city to review these ordinances. Thank you.
You are providing a fair process, sir. So we'll record this how you see fit on the side of me placed on the agenda. And note taken, thank you, Mr. Seines again for your input. Yes, sir. Mr. Sellers, go right ahead.
Tracy, if you'll, I remember when we were discussing the appointments to the planning and zoning committee. And I asked if I could make a recommendation. I was ignored for that, but I was going to recommend that you be placed on planning and zoning because this is where a lot of this needs to be and those are the people you need to address that to. They are the ones who created the sign ordinances and I know you've had an issue with that. I think it would be beneficial for you to be on the planning and zoning committee if this.
I will say this, I, I, like I said, I've been on both sides of the fence. And when I go to try and work with people, they say all they do is interpret the codes. They're not here to change the codes. I mean, I got so many smokescreens to try and not do anything. I did talk to another city. I think like Marcus said, it's super high expensive to hire, to hire a consultant. One of, that's why I put that, that plan intact in the back that we're going to do like 99.99% in-house and we will probably send it to the lawyer in our house to look at it and update the city codes and not probably go out and spend the hundreds and thousands of dollars like you were talking about because.
Mr. Seines? This is a discussion with Councilman.
So I don't, I don't think, I mean, I, I don't see that. I mean, I, I've been doing my research and I continue to do the research in order to try and make this work the most cost effective way. And I think a committee in-house will, will be the best solution to do that.
I believe you're right, Tracy, but I, I never did yield the floor. We were having a discussion. I, I, and that's exactly why I think you would be beneficial on planning and zoning.
I don't think, yeah, you can appoint, that would be dual office holding for sure. So you can be on P N Z. If I could suggest something though, a committee like that, and I did read your, your proposal. The best way to go about doing that so that it's not just an ad hoc committee and give it some, some structure. We can bring back a resolution for y'all to establish that as a formal committee. I mean, it would be less than a quorum of council members. So it could be yourself and one other council member. And, and then you would want to define who those other three people would be and who picks them, right? Is it all of council? Is it the mayor? You know, if you wanted five people on it. And you'd want to establish like, what's the objective? What's the timeline? And I'm saying we could turn that into a formal proposal for you so that when council approves it, it becomes a formal action.
Mr. Hernandez? Thank you, counselor.
Well, you just answered my question, but if you can re elaborate real quick about what you were saying about the formal committee.
So it's fairly easy to say, we're going to form an ad hoc committee. You know, you and you, like two council members, y'all go outside of the meeting, go learn about some subject and come report back to council. That's fairly easy to do without any kind of document, right? But if you're talking about coming up with a, a plan to like, talking about building codes, you're talking about, you know, the nuisance codes, all the, all the city's ordinances, right? You would probably want to break that down into little, little bites, you know, and establish, because council is not going to want to hear a complete overhaul of all the codes at once. It would be, you know, typically when you establish what's called a standing committee as opposed to an ad hoc committee. Ad hoc is you go do your research and come back. Standing committee is they're going to meet outside of these meetings and, you know, become a recurring item on y'all's agenda where they will report back, here's what results of our meeting.
So you're recommending an ad hoc meetings or just?
Based on the scope of what is in your proposal, I do not think an ad hoc committee is going to be, I think they're going to be, it's very difficult to put good parameters and scope and objectives on what they're doing. And even right now with questions like who picks these people? Are these business leaders? Are these citizens? Are these, you know, city and police?
Like Rose is, is, would be one of the people I would recommend to be on the committee.
Is that in?
Huh?
Is that, right now we're doing all this orally though.
He's an employee of the city.
Yes, I under, I understand. But that would be the kind of thing to reduce to writing or council will approve.
So you need like the people's names? Like I was thinking two business owners and.
It sounds to me, it's up to y'all. I'm just telling you, I'm trying to help you.
And as the presiding chair, what I would recommend to you, Mr. Ebersol, just go ahead and make, you know, I'll make you the chairman of the committee. Take your committee members and get started. Okay? Don't waste any more time. Just get moving on it.
We wasted enough time.
And then consult with your city administrator, county, city attorney, and then get direction.
Yeah, if council isn't approving this at all, then it's really just you doing this on your own outside of. And they'll, they'll follow up with you later. There wouldn't be any real structure, which is fine. That's all you. You don't actually need any action. Be on your own time. As long as you're, now if you're using city employee time, that would be, that would need council.
So describe my process. Okay, so like I'm going to evaluate the codes, right? And make recommendations for approval or evaluation? Like I want to address the hotspots first. I'm not really going to like totally revamp all the codes or are, I mean, I don't, I think that'd be ridiculous.
Well, and that's like, I guess that's kind of my suggestion is between, it's not something we can do sitting right here, but like between now and the next meeting, myself or Frank, you know, can help you put this in more of a formal committee format. But if you want to keep it informal and just say you go talk to four people out in the community and bring back some more information, that's fine too. That would require.
And that's what you need to do, Tracy. Just move forward.
Then it's not really a committee. It's just you doing something.
But I can have an appointing to a committee.
Well, that would require council action.
Right, that's exactly what we're looking for.
Okay.
He needs to just get started. He needs to just get started. Sir, you've had your time. You've interrupted again. Just go ahead and remove him. I'm, I'm, I'm really tired of this. It's no, no, you can't. You've already spoken. You've already had, this is a council discussion, Mr. Seines. You've been given your chance. Please leave, sir. I'm not going to tolerate you to disrupt the meeting again.
This is, yeah, this is all very high level discussion. So it would be really, it's, does council have an appetite to do this at all?
I saw how the planning and zoning worked. We shot something down, all, all five of us. And then the next thing you know, the city council.
Yes, council gets final approval on that.
Yeah, they approved everything that was shot down in the, in the P M Z. So.
And they're also limited to just planning and zoning. What you're talking about is more like building codes. You're talking about a broader scope than planning and zoning. So.
Right. So I mean, I feel like what he said was true, but I've been on the planning and zoning and we, we declined some service and then it goes to the council and all, everybody voted for it. So as far as what I'm, that's a zero for me. I don't, I don't see any value in that. As far as this is going, I think it's important that we take the bull by the horns, start looking at these codes and start processing information and deal with these codes.
You want to move to make your motion?
Yes.
Get a second and then we'll have more discussion?
Yes.
Face anybody else needs input?
So what?
What your motion would be?
I would like to start reevaluating the codes and updating them and starting to present them to legal for final, or to council for final, pre, pre-approval. And then, once they're approved, I would like to submit them in the codes.
Okay, so the item on the agenda is to hire and retain a consultant. So any of the component of your motion is relevant to the retaining a consultant? Do you still want to retain or explore? You can modify your motion to say, instead of retain, I would like staff to explore the cost in retaining a consultant. And then you can go do your research, come back to council, report to us on some of the things that you want to recommend in terms of code modifications. And then you will have an idea by your amended, saying that, well, their cost to retain consultant.
I don't think we really want to do that as much. I think what.
Your item on the agenda said retain.
Okay.
A consultant.
Retain a consultant.
It's got to be.
Yeah, at this stage.
The consultant doesn't have to be, like you said, it could be me, no, or someone else or?
It is not specific at this point.
Right.
And, and when I read your overall proposal, it would seem to me the first step to that would be, if it's just on your own, you don't need council to do anything. But if you're asking, can I engage with legal or can I engage with city staff, city administrator to help look at these things? That's where you would want them to prove that, that way you're not. Because if they have no interest in this project at all, this is their chance to say, you take it on your own.
Tracy, I, I support what you want to do and I, for lack of time, right? I don't want to be rushed into a decision. So I like to make a motion to, you know, continue discussion in the next council meeting and give you time to do some research and also get with Frank Garza and, you know, put together a formal action item. That's my motion.
So presiding chair ruling on this, right now we have a motion that Mr. Ebersol was in the process of making. Do you want to rescind that, Mr. Ebersol, and go along with your colleague on his motion that he's placed on the floor? Or do you want to, as you had your original motion, we need to address that. Is there anything, because you didn't get to finish it and you weren't clear on what your real motion should be? We can always call another special meeting, put it on that agenda as well.
In other words, if you withdraw your motion and go with.
Right.
Your colleague's motion.
Motion.
He's basically giving you, hey, let's spend a little time on this with staff or legal.
You want to withdraw your motion? As your colleague, okay. So now he went, motion, let's go with Mr. Hernandez's motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
And I second that with the amendment that you do your research on planning and zoning.
Okay, so then we have a second to that amendment with some language about, but you can't do that.
There's no, yeah, there's no amending. I understand your point.
Saying that the city council doesn't make the codes, planning and zoning makes.
Planning and zoning makes some elements of it, yes, but ultimately. Planning and zoning makes some elements of it, yes, but ultimately y'all, y'all have final approval.
That's right. We're the final approving authority. So your motion is to go ahead and approve Mr. Hernandez's motion. The amendment language is struck because it's not relevant and conducive to the language. So now.
Only a recommendation that he, that he goes to.
It was a second, a second followed by your.
There you go. Good. Thanks for the clarification. Mr. Burton. Um, so any comments?
I, I was just going to say that before I even got on council, this has been an issue, uh, that way back in the day. And I was serving on P and Z and we had codes that were conflicting with each other.
Right.
And it, it was so overwhelmingly, it, it, there's just so much to take in. It's not just, you know, like that many things. It's, it's a, it's a big code thing. And I'm sure the code guy can.
Yeah.
It, it tests to that. So it, it's not something that, I, I think the recommendation of the, uh, council, city attorney is, is fair that you got to take it in bites, you know, it's, it's way, way, way.
Right.
It's, it's more than what we're even discussing here.
From what I hear, Mr. Eversol does not want to waste any more time too much. He wants to get the ball rolling. So get the ball rolling. And so much as Mr. Hernandez will be getting the ball rolling on the codes pertaining to parking. So these are all tasks that you can get on. You let me know, we call a special meeting and we hit it. And this is going to be in line with the code compliance officer as well, that we're going to be putting in a task force. So I commend you, uh, Mr. Eversol. We'll get the ball rolling. Okay? All right. So now let's go ahead and call the vote. Ms. Weaver? Okay, Mr. Eversol?
Hi.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez?
Yay.
Mr. Sellers?
Yay.
Mr. Burton?
Yeah.
Motion carries five oh. Let's move on to the next item. No nays. Okay. We've gone through number 10. Uh, crime prevention, number 11, discussion regarding crime prevention by patrol. Mr. Hernandez. Let's see, we can roll through this pretty quick.
Well, I just have a real quick, uh, simple, I'm going to say recommendation to the council. It's my understanding that we already have two very expensive bikes sitting in our Sallyport. For the purposes of police officer patrol. And so, but I never see any police officers on patrol on these bikes. And I think it's very important, especially, uh, in certain areas of the city and also special events or even a certain times of the year. And so what I'd like to do is to, you know, have a discussion about, you know, maybe we need some police training. So that might be a question for, uh, uh, Officer Monsivias. As far as, I don't know if we, we need required training for those, uh, police officers, officers to, uh, patrol on the bikes. But I definitely think that we need to put them in force. Um, so that's, that's where I'm at.
Mayor, if I may?
Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Johnson, go right here.
I spoke with the chief about the bike patrol. They are, uh, the bikes are there. I know that they had officers that were trained. I don't know if we were shorthanded and that's why they haven't been doing it. But if that's a direction the council wants us to move, we'll start exploring that more.
And I'll, I'll, uh, I'll agree with that. We are shorthanded. So you have two officers on a shift per, per shift. You know, you get an assault and progress, which they had a little while ago. And he's, you know, at the mall, he has to find his patrol vehicle, mount it, then finally go up to the assault and progress. So I'm, you, one or the other when it comes to all that.
Councilman Burton?
Uh, yes. And, and answer to your question, yes, you have to have certified, there's got to be a certification for that. I, I think, again, we, we, we take off little bites and pieces again and start small and, and work our way up. But, um, I'd like to see it, you know, maybe during Christmas time or during a Fourth of July or, or New Year's when fireworks and, and they don't expect the bi, bike officer to pull up and they're in the middle of the street setting off fireworks and stuff. But, um, that, that's again, why we want some, some, uh, reserve officers in there to help take the stress off. Just two, is it only two now per shift or three?
It's supposed to be three. We only have two. We have a few in training right now as well. But, but again, with the, uh, reserve program, I'll just let you know right now, no one's going to work over here for free because you actually put in work over here. We are a very busy city. So they'd rather go to a place like Gray Forest that doesn't have any crime, be a reserve officer and just use, you know, the, that timeframe for them to, you know, do side jobs. No one wants to really work over here for free. I'll tell you that right now, reserve program or not, just letting you know.
Thank you. Respectfully, I don't agree with that. That's not a very true statement. But, um, there's a lot of people who come over to work.
I, I think it, I think just their, the presence will help deter the crime and, and just, just, again, it, it's, it's, it's got to be for staffing. And I, I'd like to see it brought back. The, we've got those two expensive bikes sitting over there. But, you know, again, we got to start small and, and build it up. And I, I appreciate what you're saying. And, uh, you know, we just got to get the, get up to staffing.
That's what we get an answer all the time from staff, all the time, is there's many reasons why they can't, but there's not one good reason why they can't. Get off and, and get on the project and get it done. We don't want to hear anymore why you can't. We want you to do it and get it done. And this is the change that the people in the mandate or the people have said, and this is where we need to move in that direction. And if staff can't do it, then we put staff that can. Mr. Hernandez?
And, you know, going back to the crime prevention budget, we have over a million dollars of revenue. So, you know, why can't we carve off a piece for actually crime prevention and use those dollars to fund some police on the bike? That's, that's my comment.
This would be the kind of thing where if you wanted to fund bike certification for all Balcony Heights officers, that would be a crime prevention use for your crime control. That would be, that, and that's something y'all can do with the budget season, for sure.
That would be a good option. Something to consider during the budget. Uh, any other comments?
And this is a discussion only item.
That's correct. Okay. And let's move on. Next one, Mr. Hernandez, discussion regarding crime prevention cameras at apartments.
So when I was campaigning and visiting in the apartment complexes, uh, you know, there's a couple, I don't know if I should even name the location, but there was a couple that walking through the courtyard, you could actually see the drug dealers on the balconies with their dogs and they're keeping watch of what's going on in the court, in, in the courtroom or courthouse, I should say, courtyard. And so it, it was crazy. And, and the amount of women that were scared, uh, many rapes have happened. It, it's just really bad. And there's two particular complexes that I have in mind. And I'd like to maybe have staff reach out to the management of those apartment complexes to see if we can have a, uh, I'm going to say like a, an agreement to put up some cameras that would be, uh, directly, I guess, uh, linked to our dispatch office. And so that they can monitor it and then dispatch can call, you know, the, the PD that's on, on duty and have them directed out there. Again, as a, as a item for prevention.
If, if it's something y'all, there's a number of legal issues that come up with, with surveillance programs like that, especially on private property. If it's something that y'all want to look at, I, I saw this item on here and, and intended to at least take a cursory look or talk about it with Frank, but I don't know that he's looked into it either. But if this is, I can tell you just at the outset that there are, this will involve some, raise some legal issues. So if it's something y'all are interested in hearing about, um, we can certainly be prepared for that at the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, at least we have.
I don't want to shoot it down now because it very well may be viable, but there's probably going to be a, you can do this, but not that, or, you know, some boundaries there.
But good idea, good observation. Let's explore it. I mean, nothing ventured, nothing gained. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez. Anybody have any comments? Yes, go ahead.
I think proactive versus reactive is a, is a better system. If you can avoid the crime from taking place, you can get rid of crime or reduce it. I put burglar bars on my door, on my windows. I put bars on my doors. Security cameras are everywhere. And I, my crime has been reduced in my house. Now, I don't know how that's going to apply to this situation. But I do know that we should look a little more into proactive instead of reactive. Waiting for the crime to happen, it's already done. You're just going to clean up the mess or take care of business. I don't know which is worse, but, uh, I think we should look to try and save people before they get crashed out.
Thank you, Mr. Eversol. Anybody else? Okay. Let's go ahead and move on. Uh, item number 13, department reports, Q and A, police department, fire department, community development, economic development, public affairs. Mr. Johnson?
Mayor, city council, uh, in every agenda packet that you'll get, you're going to get department reports in there. One of the intentions of tonight were to have department heads here. I've got a couple that are ill, so they weren't here. Uh, and in the interest of time, I'd like to say that you just review the, uh, reports that you've got. If you have any questions at the next, uh, council meeting, we can answer those and, and move forward.
And council? Any questions for staff?
Make a motion to approve.
So it's just department reports? No motion is necessary? Yeah, I understand. Um, anybody have any other Q and As or department reports? Hey, I just have one thing I want to bring up. In the last, um, this last Thursday, we had an event. And with enough time staff, we had requested the chiefs to be there present. Uh, it's under my understanding that our police chief had some form of leave. However, I didn't get an answer as to why our fire chief was not there. We had confirmed, well, because I was asked by Mr. Schneider, why was the chief of police and the chief of the fire department not present? So I was a little disappointed that you weren't there when you had confirmed you were going to be there. Did you give me an answer as to why you were not there? And why didn't you notify me? Send me an email, something to let me know you weren't going to be there.
Yes, sir. I apologize for not notifying you, but I had an issue with my son that I had to deal with. The gentleman I sent with, he's actually a a fire service public educator. So he's certified in that. So that's kind of his forte. He likes doing that. He was doing it, uh, in the morning time at Delview. So that's kind of his, his training and, and that too.
If we can, following the chain of command, just notify our city administrator, whoever it is at the time, and just make sure that I'm aware of it. Cause I was expecting you to be there. And so was the guest, the host as well. Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Um, so now we have, um, any announcements by comments of mayor council members? Anything you want to announce? Anybody? Any announcements by the city administrator?
Mayor, if I may, I'm sorry. I was just going to say we had a great event over at the buttercream.
Yeah, that was great. I wish I could have made it.
And, uh, it was quite delicious. My blood sugar didn't shoot up too much. Uh, and, uh, you did a great job and, and I just want to commend everybody that, that is pitching in on that.
Thank you for being there on my behalf. Go ahead.
Speaking of buttercream, um, I reached out to Ms. Marine today and, and for my fellow council members. I, I think it would be a good idea for us to have a coffee with the council. And I think that would be a great location for us. Maybe once a month, uh, the citizens and residents of Balcony Heights can come and visit with us and have coffee and pastries. And it also helps promote that business. So, um, if you have any suggestions on the day or the time, then I would say probably redirect that through Ms. Murray.
Excellent idea. Anybody else? I just had one more thing and that was that, um, we had the Cub Scouts here and it was a great group of kids. I think what, 10 of them, right?
I believe, yeah, right.
Scout group five with the parents and everybody. And they, again, thank you, fire department. Thank you, police department. They had a blast. And if you'd heard them, this, oh, I want to be a police officer. I want to be a fireman. I love it, you know? And so we actually, we actually had them to come over here. They sat down at the chambers. We showed them how the council works. And they were like, mayor, may I be recognized? And they were starting to get disruptive. So wait a minute, we can't do that. You got to make sure your colleague is talking, let him finish, then he can proceed. And then they loved it. They got on the mic. They learned how to use it back and forth. So thank you, everybody, staff, everyone for making it such a productive, wonderful event. They all got a goodie bag plus the parents. And the parents are just so proud. So thank you. Thank you very much. And Mr. Schneider from Bear nine one one is, was his cub den where your son goes to. He thanks you very much as well. Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Well, you're good, sir. You're good.
Thank you, Mayor, city council. Uh, as you know, I dated, uh, May 19, 2025, addressed to Mayor A. Rodriguez Jr., Mayor, City of Balcony Heights and City Council. From Mr. Andy Johnson, city administrator, city of Balcony Heights, referenced retirement. Mayor Rodriguez, city council, in accordance with my agreement for professional services and employment as a city administrator, city of Balcony Heights, Texas. Section 12 termination severance and resignation letter, e-retirement. I hereby provide the city council notice of three months, advance notice of my intention to retire from the city of Balcony Heights. I offer my continued services as long as the city council sees fit to ensure a seamless transition. I thank you for the opportunity to serve the city of Balcony Heights and wish you the best of luck. I've, I've spoken with some of the council members individually, uh, inquired, uh, about my intention. Uh, general law cities are different than chartered cities. General law cities, mayor has a lot more power than in the chartered city. Chartered cities are, are broke down on, uh, specific, uh, duties. I take pride in my city employees. I mentor, I coach, I grow. I help them advance and I've talked about that, uh, to, uh, to an extent. I appreciate the time that I've had with the employees here. They're outstanding. But they can only serve one master. This man right here was elected by the citizens of the city of Balcony High and rightfully so. He's got his way of managing. I have my way of managing and they're different. So in the interest of ensuring that the vision that you, mayor, and the city council have for this city, I'm stepping away for that reason because I want the employees to do good. I want them to advance. I want the best for the city of Balcony Heights and understand that. The people elected you. You are the bosses here. I'm, uh, I serve at your will and that's a way, it, it is in my profession. I consider myself a extreme professional that has had success in other cities to do some outstanding work. Uh, so I know what I'm capable. But you know what? I appreciate the opportunity and, uh, for the citizens that, uh, are, are watching the air or the employees in, uh, attendance. I do this for the betterment of the city of Balcony Heights because I understand and appreciate you as council members and mayor. Get paid zero for all the time that you invest and understand that you do it. You're elected by the people. So every time I look at, at, uh, Councilman Eversol, Councilman Weaver, Councilman Hernandez, Councilman Sellers and Councilman Burton, and especially Mayor Johnny Rodriguez, I understand that I'm looking at the people of Balcony Heights. That's what I, uh, do. I know that there's an executive session. I hope that you go in there. If you want me to stay, however long you want me to stay, I'm here. Please give me some direction as what you as a council, because I work for the entire body, not just one person. And that's where the confusion sometimes, uh, is. So I hope that you discuss whatever. And there will never be any harder feelings between myself and any of you, any of the previous council members. Because this is business and we're, we're business people. So having said that, uh, thank you for your time.
Was this item 15?
Yeah, I was just going to say we're discussing item 17.
Yeah, 15 is typically.
Yeah. And so 15 was basically, uh, an announcement by the city administrator.
If we can.
Whoever you got into the city administrator position, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say that it's fine that that's 15. There's no other announcements. If we can clear 16.
Right.
Then that will.
Cause that went out a little bit out the boundaries, Mr. Johnson. But it's okay.
It's okay.
It's all right. So we're finished with item 16 and, um,
Uh, fifteen, sixteen is still there. Any future agenda items?
Any future items by the mayor, council members to be placed on the future agenda? I think we heard something earlier.
Yeah, to the extent it was already mentioned, I believe we have notes on that if you've already, some of these were.
Somebody.
Hey, bring it back to us, but it, and y'all can do this between meetings too. So.
Yeah.
But this is a chance right now, if you wanted it for the public record to say, hey, I want to see this on the next agenda, you can.
You can always just send the request to Ms. Earl. She'll put it on the agenda. All right. Is there anything you wanted to ask, Mr. Johnson? Okay, Mr. Eversol? Mr. Sellers? Mr. Burton? Okay. So the time is, um, right now, nine thirty-six P M. We'll be coming out of the open session, going into closed session of the executive session number seventeen, discussion pursuant to five, five, one, oh, seven, one, attorney client consultation in five, five, one, oh, seven, four, personnel, personnel matters to discuss city administrator announced retirement and options for city council on the position of the city administrator. Y'all want to take a quick little break? And the time is ten, ten P M. We have now, uh, left the executive session and we are now in open session. So let's go ahead and move on what was deliberated in the executive session. Councilman, uh, Hernandez?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept Mr. Jocelyn's retirement per the terms discussed in executive session.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, we're doing this other deal. Okay. Do we have a, a motion, a second to that motion?
Oh, second.
Okay, Councilman Burton is second. Any further discussion? Okay, Mr. Burton, your vote?
Aye.
Mr. Sellers? Okay, Mr. Hernandez?
Hey, yay.
Mr. Eversol?
Very.
Yay? Yes.
Yay.
Ms. Weaver? Yay. So we have four to one uh, to accept it. Okay, so, um, my recommendation, by law and by the rules, I am the city administrator at this point. So I am going to defer my responsibility and role over to Mr. Floyd Messick. Mr. Messick, you carried us before for a few days or for a little time. I'd like to put you in charge again as the city administrator temporarily, which we're going to be resolving it very quickly, probably within a week's time or less. You will be in the position of the city administrator. And with the instructions that you defer of any type of changes to our city, no employment, no rehiring, no firing, no placing anybody in anybody's positions. You're just basically going to babysit the city for us for a few days. Okay? And so if you're okay, we're going to go ahead and appoint you to that. This will prevent me from having to be the city administrator. And we will not lose any continuity since you're familiar with the city. That'd be okay?
That would be okay, but may I ask, what is the plan for that position afterwards?
What is what now?
The plan for the city administrator position.
Oh, well, we begin the process of seeking a new city administrator, appointing an interim to replace you right away. And then we'll move forward with that right away.
Mayor, I'm glad to serve, of course, but did you consider the fire chief as well?
No, we, we got you as the one we want. Okay? Okay, so do we have a motion for both? Uh, we have already done the first one. So let's call the vote on that one, right? Okay, we voted on the first, that's right. So now let's vote to appoint Mr. Floyd Messick during this interim period until we take further action.
Think we need to make a motion first, right?
Yeah, so there be a motion to appoint.
I make a mo- a motion to appoint Mr. Messick as, uh, interim city administrator.
And then also just in added language, Mr. Messick.
Effective immediately.
Yeah, it won't be very long, sir. So there won't be any change in pay or anything like that. There's not much you will be doing for a very long period, probably less than a week. Okay, within, within a seventy-two hour period.
Okay, so we have a second to that motion?
I second it.
Okay, Ms. Weaver has made the second. So call for any discussion. Okay, all in favor, Mr. Burton? Yeah. Okay, Mr. Sellers?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Hernandez?
Yay.
Mr. Eversol? Or Ms. Weaver?
Yay.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion on the Florida adjourn. The time is.
I second it.
Ten thirteen P M. We have a second by Councilman Hernandez. All in favor?
Aye.
The time is ten thirteen P M. We have now adjourned.